Hello and good evening and welcome to the first meeting of the Milton Planning Board fiscal year 2024. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and welcome all of those who are attending this evening. To begin, I would like to introduce the members of the planning board. To begin, if we could introduce first the members. Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagheus, clerk.
Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair remote this evening. And now our staff in attendance, Josh?
Josh Eckert Lee, Assistant Town Planner.
Tim?
And Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Great. And before we begin, I would like to just send my condolences to the family of Julia Getman. Julia, this past week, has lost her father and will not be with us this evening. And to let her know that we are all thinking of her and her family. And I would also like to acknowledge the passing of our previous planning board member, Denny Swenson, who also lost her father this past week. So, thinking of them at this very difficult, difficult time. So, thank you. And we will now begin with our citizen speak. If there is anyone either in the audience or on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak at this time.
We have a couple of hands raised in the audience.
Okay.
Pete Jackson.
All right. Who do we have raising their hand? We can, oh, in the audience, yes, welcome.
Thank you, Meredith. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been following-
If you could just give us your address.
Peter Jackson, Capen Street. Thanks.
Welcome, Pete.
I've been following the presentations and discussions of the planning department concerning the MBTA communities initiative, but I haven't engaged with the planning board. And since you're also discussing this, I felt it was a time to at least go up and introduce myself and let you know a couple of my thoughts. I hope these comments are something that you'll consider as you move forward with the proposed rezoning that this initiative requires. Part of the intent of the legislation is to develop more housing opportunities proximate to T stations. And, you know, the idea is transit-oriented development, which would encourage more people to take public transportation and maybe reduce the impact of traffic. Unfortunately, the serious deterioration of the T's facilities and services are driving people away from the T and fewer people are using the T than used to be when it was more efficient. The amount of rezoning required is going to really worsen our traffic impacts on our neighborhoods. And so I would hope that the planning board or the planning department would require a real study of potential or likely traffic impacts because our traffic situation is already pretty bad. So I think that should be considered. Hopefully, we'll get the improvements from the T that they're promising, although they're 10 years out. I think housing is one of the highest priorities for the town and the Commonwealth. There are plenty of high-cost housing opportunities in town, but we seriously lack opportunities for low and moderate income and younger residents. I think a diverse population should be a high community value, not only regarding race, but also income, age, and family composition. So this new housing gives us an opportunity to address some of those issues. I support making a serious effort to try to develop a rezoning proposal in compliance with the MBTA zoning, if the impacts and the opportunities they present are fairly and equitably distributed. I know that a minimum of 50% of the units of the new zoning has to occur within a half-mile of the T stations, but I think that equity would suggest that no more than 50% be located in that area and the rest be distributed more evenly around town. Similarly, I suggest that the density increase be equitably distributed between the stations in the quarter-mile zone and the half-mile zone. So again, that the impacts and the density increase aren't all absorbed, you know, within a small area of the town. So, and the other 50%, I think it's important that they be distributed throughout the town. I'm all in favor of finding blocks of land that can accommodate a higher density of housing. I know the state maintenance facility on Granite Avenue is a great opportunity to do more density, and there are select areas where we can get higher densities than the minimum required and absorb, you know, some of this required capacity in those areas to try to reduce the impact on neighborhoods a little bit. I also think that the suggested 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size is not appropriate. The zoning, you know, requires a minimum of three units and three off-street parking spaces, and I don't think a 5,000-square-foot lot can accommodate three units of housing and three off-street parking spaces without having a significant impact on the neighborhood, but also I don't think it allows for enough outdoor space to really accommodate three housing units to have any, and it's not in character with what we have in town. So I would suggest a minimum lot size of about 7,500 square feet. And I know, Josh, that the planning department is running these scenarios, I guess it's DHCD or their consultant who does-
HLC.
HLC. And they'll have to run that and see what the impact of increasing the lot size is. But I think it's really important if we're going to have a quality of life in the town that we want. Finally, I believe that design standards and the design review process are part of the proposal, and I believe these are both allowed, that aims to integrate the new housing density within the existing neighborhood character to assure that the new housing doesn't unnecessarily change the character of, you know, the beautiful residential neighborhoods that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pete, for joining us today.
Thanks, Meredith.
Anyone else from the audience who would also like to speak? Any, is anyone else in the audience or anyone?
Yes.
Yes, welcome. If you could please state your name and-
My name's-
Your address for the record. Thank you.
Mark Cristo, 17 Waldo Road, Havelia Street.
Welcome, Mark.
And it's nice to be here. Thank you, Madam Sherman. I'm a little nervous, but I'm going to try to stay calm.
Thank you.
In any event, I have been given serious consideration of this topic for quite some time, and I have serious concerns, so I'd like to share some of it tonight with you all. I'll start off with a given, an obvious fact, in my opinion, that the Ashmont Station is a terminus, and it's the terminus of the Rapid Transit Red Line that ends at Ashmont. The Matapan Trolley, on the other hand, is clearly not Rapid Transit. I don't think it should be categorized as such because it's distinctly dissimilar from Rapid Transit and for many reasons. The trolley, it's small. It's a standalone loop, and it has a very short distance of only two miles, at which point it ends at Ashmont. Its operation provides transport for passengers but never any further than Ashmont Station, southern terminus of the Red Line Rapid Transit branch. And as such, the Matapan Trolley only feeds into the Rapid Transit, just like a bus, and enabляет any other transportation medium that serves Ashmont. It doesn't provide its passengers to direct transport into downtown central nucleus, and it's necessary for all passengers to disembark. That's mandatory. And because it has no ability to do so, because it sits beyond that terminus. This process is quite atypical of Rapid Transit. It's never consideration for any of the MBTA passengers that ride in either the other lines, whether it be the orange, the green, the blue, or red line. And it requires one to disembark long before you get to that downtown core. Transfers are of necessity, not by choice in this particular case, and I find that to be a critical difference. And I was trying to think in terms of formula form, how do you present it? So when I look at Rapid Transit travel, I see it's a function of two variables. It's the local wait time, wherever it is that you live, that you board, and it's the trip to downtown. That's what Rapid Transit does, in my opinion. And it prioritizes the passenger at the moment that they embark on the trip at their local station. You're prioritized at that point. When you take the Matapan Trolley, it's a different formula. You have the local wait time at your local stop, but the trip only gets you to Ashmont. It doesn't get you to downtown. At that point, you disembark. And when you disembark, you have to wait for a second time at Ashmont for the Rapid Transit train to pull into the station. And having taken the train on several occasions, I know that at some times, there's a second wait time at Ashmont called the dwell time, which is the period after which the train enters the station and sits in the station at a terminus before its sequence in terms of its line to be able to carry on its trip. So in that case, that's four variables, and then finally, the fifth variable is the actual trip to downtown. So it's a five-variable formula versus two-variable formula when I look at the Matapan Trolley. And it's only for the Matapan Trolley that that occurs. So for me, I bear in mind that the necessity to disembark the trolley provides you also with no guarantee of finding a seat or getting on the Ashmont train, especially during rush hours when traffic volumes are high. You're probably not going to get the seat. You probably will get on, but you don't always get on. And that's another drastic difference because the passenger on the Matapan Trolley, the second they leave and disembark that trolley, they lose their priority status. At that point, you are pulled with, together with all the other people at Ashmont Station, those that were your fellow passengers around the trolley, those that are coming by bus, MBTA bus, those that are coming by Bat Bus as well, those that get dropped off in a car, and those that walk to the station. So now you get a big pool of people rushing to get onto that train. That never occurs on any of the other Rapid Transit lines within the system. Again, it's just the wait time at your local stop, and then you get on, it's the distance down, downtown, and nobody ever gets kicked off en route to downtown when you're on the Green Line at Riverside or the Braintree Line or any of the other Rapid Transit trains. So I see that as something that's quite different. That's why I say the Matapan Trolley is distinctly dissimilar. Another key deficit in terms of its operation is that the Matapan Trolley has limited carrying capacity, and we know that. It's small, the PCC cars are old, they're antiquated, but they are much more like a bus. And I think when I sat in on that MBTA reformation, I think that's what it's called, the revitalization plan about three weeks or so ago, they said the carrying capacity or seat capacity is about 40. A bus is about 38 or 39. So they're not dissimilar in that particular sense. But, I'm sorry, I just couldn't see where I am. I kind of lost my place. But that said, we also know that the trolleys are often pulled from service when, in climate weather hits, and I feel that their limited carrying capacity would be overwhelmed by similar build-out standards that are signed all Rapid Transit communities that have to build out at 25%, not just because it's limited carrying capacity, but also for the disconnect and the wait time. It would just be a backlog of people if we were thinking that we could build out to the capacity of a Braintree or Somerville or Burke Line or out of towns that do truly benefit by Rapid Transit system. So by comparison, you know, when I look at those Rapid Transit communities, they benefit from multi-car vessels that are larger and they provide direct linear transportation right into downtown Boston. Coincidentally, and this is just an observation that I've been thinking about more as of recent, when I saw the numbers that were projected on the screen at that reformation, and I was really kind of surprised at how low the numbers were in my neighborhood. At Capen Street and Valley Road, they were minimal. It's like 12 people boarding a day. It seems absurd. But when I think about the Matapan Trolley, it's not just a trolley that acts like a bus route in the town of Milton. It's actually a shared resource with Dorchester and Matapan, two vibrant, more vibrant neighborhoods in Milton itself. So we have one shared vessel that's being utilized amongst three communities. Excuse me. And the sharing of the resources is not just on the route itself in general, but also at a couple of our local stops, particularly Central and Milton Station. So I'm having a hard time imagining how a single trolley is the basis for an aggressive housing agenda. I say aggressive because of the numbers, the differential between where we are today at whatever it is, 9,800, is it, Josh, and where we might be with a Rapid Transit at 2,461, especially when you consider the inferior service capabilities of the trolley. And then there's another component that I look at that I feel worsens the scenario in that the stops are so darn close, they're about a quarter-mile at best apart, so there's only a difference of less than a mile between all four Milton stops. That's a highly condensed area in which to cite development. It creates a superconcentration in my eyes because when you draw your radiuses around those stations, you've got overlaps that are double and triple that drive that density number, which is making the numbers difficult when I've listened to Tim talk about this on TV and discuss it with the Select Board Chair, Mr. Zulis. And I feel that it's a misapplication of an erroneous categorization in this particular case that is driving the superconcentration, and it speaks volumes of a misapplied policy and development that's driven by a faulty premise. If we were to take that linear passage that has four stations, less than a mile apart, and superimpose it, say, in downtown Boston, and look at, say, from Park Street to Chiao Street, which is a further distance than, say, between Capen and Valley, it would kind of be inequitable to think that you would be able to double and triple the development in that particular area. And we're talking downtown Boston. So how is it okay to do this in Milton? Doesn't make sense to me. Not that I don't want to see housing developed, that we don't want to attend to agendas in affordable housing and diverse housing for people, but this, given consideration, is not the appropriate designation or categorization for Milton, in my eyes. I think that Milton is not Rapid Transit. I know that we're not commuter rail and we're not smaller joint and community. What I think we are, under this plan, under this guideline, is in a joint and community. And in looking at the communities out there that kind of fit the bill, I think of Arlington, I think of Watertown, kind of so similar proximity, probably little denser neighborhoods with greater populations, but they too don't have Rapid Transit within their borders. They're very close. Arlington is close to Aloha, which is an incredible transit hub as compared to, say, Ashmont. But that's, I think, where we belong, and I think there's benefit to all in this particular case, not just residents, like all of us, and your staff, Josh, and Tim, et cetera, but it's going to be tremendously challenging to build out even a 10%. That's almost 1,000 units of housing. That's a lot for us to consider. But it's not as overwhelming as a 2,461. It also buys us more time to plan, to determine and to have better control over where we place these, where these homes or these units. So it really affords us better site selection, and we could be more insightful and center some of these transit pockets in areas that are close to the transit, meaning the trolley, but also on core bus routes that come through town without being disruptive to the community and neighborhoods, my neighborhood in particular. I do have that bias concern, of course. I also know that my grandparents, when they came to this country, and as an aside, lost their home and their livelihood when the West End was taken over, and that kind of really split my family. Some of us, some of them did well, some of them didn't. But I would hate to see us go forward quickly on a plan that would be so disruptive to people that we would regret that afterwards. I do have a couple other things I'd like to just touch upon, and that relates to the MBTA and their plans, their proposals over the course of time. And I'm thinking for the last, say, I'm going to go back 50 years, but most recently, in June, last month, we talked and listened on the revitalization plan of $66 million price tag. And is it welcomed absolutely? Is it years out? Absolutely. I think Mr. Jackson hinted at that, that it's probably a 10-year period before we see that. But on that night, and there was a lot of interested people making some interesting comments from both sides of the river, but I asked in particular, does that mean that the $66 million expenditures does not incorporate the Matapan Trolley into Rapid Transit? I specifically asked that, and the answer was no, it will not. So it really does not incorporate the trolley as Rapid Transit in our community. And as we know, in 2018, 2019, there was the bus conversion proposal that was, you know, kind of met with a lot of resistance. I wasn't too keen on it. I did go to one of the meetings that they had at that time. And we're still working through the process of getting some of that done, and I know there are issues as Senator Timothy brought up that night, still with the stairs in Milton, et cetera. So, you know, how much credibility do we give the MBTA for their plans going forward? And knowing what their plans have been in terms of, you know, kind of coming up with what their overall assessment of what the Matapan Trolley line is. As a kid, I've been here since almost my whole life. My parents bought the house in the late, mid-'60s. My dad worked in transportation for the New York, New Haven Railroad, Penn Central, almost lost his job until M-Tech took over. So I have a recollection of something, and I thought it was like a dream, and, you know, I talked to my brother about it. So how do you remember this stuff? Back in the late '60s, and I thought it was after that, but Dad would tell me stories, and I remembered some of it. Back in the late '60s, there was a push to convert this to Rapid Transit, and I don't know how many people in this room or in this town know of it. But I've put it in my mind as to what occurred, and I've been doing some research, and I'm finding some information that substantiates what it was that I recall from years ago. And it was, it's most intriguing, and it was politically motivated, quite frankly, but in the late '60s, there was an attempt to convert it. Milton fought a tooth and nail. It was a two-to-two-and-a-half-year timeframe from 1967 through 68 and 1969. The plan eventually was dropped by the MBTA after appeals from Milton, who was fighting not just this, but the I-95 extension. So I mean, talk about being put under the gun with the pressure at the time. And thankfully, our forefathers, I think, did the right thing because our community would be vastly different if they hadn't done what they did then.
Mark, if you could just wrap up soon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
They have other people who would like to speak, so I-
I can get carried away. I'll try to, but what would have happened is the line would have been totally transformed. There's only two-and-a-quarter-mile between Ashmont and Matapan. We and Milton as a community would have lost three of our four stops. The only remaining step would have been at Milton. So it would have gone Ashmont to Milton to Matapan. There would have been the elimination, there would have been a need to introduce a viaduct at Central Ave to carry it over the roadway system. For that reason, when the Conley brothers, I think, built the condominiums at Hendry's, they acquired the land from Milton, who would acquire it from the MBTA after they abandoned their plane in the early '70s so that they could build their condos. But that was taken from a gas station, a parking lot, from what Dad told me, because they were going to build a viaduct over there. Had this whole thing gone through and we had Rapid Transit, the access would be off the Elliott Street corridor and onto Adams Street and Matapan. And if that had happened and we had Rapid Transit, we'd be basing our housing with different parameters of what we're doing today. And I guess because, you know, I have to allow others to speak, there is a lot of information out there, and I just will say in summary that in looking through annual reports and other information, both the selectmen, a select board, the town administrator, legislative council, and town council, all wrote summaries in the annual reports in those three-year time period, talking about this threat to Milton, which I think is important to bring to the table and to start to research so that we could develop, I think, a formidable presentation of facts to question the categorization. With that, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I appreciate your thoughtful comments.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who are either online? Any hands raised?
Seeing no hands raised, and no hands raised here in the blue.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, then that will conclude our citizen speak. We are actually, Ned is going to join us, but he is running a little bit late for the start of the public hearing at 152 Robbins Street. So at this time-
Meredith, it looks like Ned's here, so-
Oh, he is? Okay.
Do whatever you want to do.
Okay. We can welcome Ned in to join us. And maybe, Ned, perhaps we should open the public hearing for 111 Highland Street and continue that for your request. And then do Robbins Street.
Meredith, before we continue it-
Yes.
I'd like to submit the certification that I watched the June 24 hearing. And I believe that's a requirement for me to continue with that hearing, but I just wanted, while I have it, I wanted to be able to submit it so I don't lose it. So I'm going to take, I'm going to hand this to Josh, okay, for the record?
That's great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And you know what? My apologies, Ned. I skipped him in the staff update before we begin. Can I just let Tim give us an update that he, if he needs?
Yeah, sure thing. That's Meredith.
My apologies, Tim.
No, no, no worries. But one thing I just wanted to put on the board's radar is I've been speaking with the MAPC team that's working on the East Milton zoning. They would like to come in for the board's August 10 meeting to do a kickoff with the board and kind of go through what their process is going to be and start to talk a little bit about, you know, what the public process around that East Milton zoning is going to be. So they've got a full agenda that they'd like to talk about, and August 10, that team is available to come in.
That's great.
Looking forward to that.
That's fantastic. Great.
That's all I've got for now, so you can move on.
And I just, I did want to just mention that our next meeting dates, we do have a public forum on the MBTA where the information that is going to be presented this evening by Tim will also be presented in a public forum. So it will be on Zoom at 7:00 PM, and we hope that people will encourage others who are either watching this to encourage others to tune into that forum as well. And then currently, we have a meeting scheduled for the second meeting in August, but because I think we may not have things ready, we, I was going to suggest possibly not holding our meeting the second week, but maybe if we need to, adding an additional meeting the first week of August prior to our regular scheduled August 10 meeting. And I don't know how members would feel about that.
Can you-
Not having our second meeting since we're having the public forum Monday.
I'm sorry, so not having the 24th, but having the 3rd and the 10th?
Yes, that's what, and having the 3rd is a placeholder pending when, you know, our public hearings, definitely, I know, Ned, we're going to move 111 Highland Street to August 10, but just as a placeholder to have the 3rd and then the 10th. Would that be okay with members?
I'll be away on the 3rd.
Okay.
Just, I have a question for Tim about the contracts with the consultants on the MBTA communities. My understanding is that UTIL was granted a short extension. My understanding is that UTIL was granted a short extension. So would not meeting in August impact the schedule for the consultants with the grants, Tim?
I don't, I don't think so. I, we have a meeting with, we have a standing meeting on Friday mornings with them, so we haven't really talked about what the sort of the nature and the extent of that extension is. But I don't, I don't think it'll have much of an effect, but I don't think it'll be a problem.
All right, so, and if we backtrack from August, I mean, December 4th, special town meeting for zoning, do you have a date by which zoning article would have to be submitted to the select board?
It's, I have that timeline in the action plan. If you give me a minute, I can bring that up and we can-
That was a question I had too, yeah, that would be helpful.
That's only, I'm just thinking, we have a month between meetings and at a timeframe in which it might be critical in terms of this MBTA zoning.
Do you have that date, Tim?
I'm getting there, hold on, sorry.
Thank you.
And Josh, while he's looking that up, do we have a date for an August forum?
We do. Unfortunately, it also requires me to look it up.
Okay.
So we, I had based our action plan submission on sort of previous special town meetings for zoning. So I have a, the date that I have is a planning board hearing for the first and second meetings in October, so that'd be October 12th and October 26th. As it relates to sort of how the warrant has to get put together, I don't have dates on that. I can, I can get that information to you all, but the planning board hearing date that we plugged in there, you know, had sort of baked into it, you know, the usual zoning process we go through for special town meetings. So let me, let me check in with the select board office on what their deadline for a warrant article would be.
And Cheryl, to your question, we're planning for the week of August 14th, but haven't yet decided on a specific date in that week. It'll either be Wednesday or Thursday.
And that will be in person, correct?
That is our intention, yes.
And September, there'll be one in mid-September as well?
Yes, in that similar timeframe.
Well, Meredith, I just would like for us to bear those dates in mind as we consider the meeting dates for August and September.
Yep. Yes, I agree with that because we certainly want to keep everything moving, and I think we're going to have some good information after Tim's presentation. We'll get feedback and hopefully from the community forum on Monday. We'll get some good feedback on the direction that we're going.
Meredith, can we review the seven weeks left in the summer and just make sure we have the right dates for each of these weeks? Do we have any meeting next week? No.
Monday's the public forum, the 17th.
Okay.
So the 17th is Tim's presentation or the planning department's presentation.
Okay.
And that's on Zoom.
Yep. And that's the only event we have that week?
Correct.
Okay. The week of the 24th, do we have any events?
We were scheduled to have a regular meeting, and it's up to the board. I am away that week and cannot attend, but if we wanted to go ahead, if we felt the need to go ahead and have that meeting, that's why I was suggesting maybe the first week in August, because if there's work that needs to be done on our districts, it might give a little bit of time to our consultants to get that work done.
Okay. How does the board feel about then meeting the week of the 31st? That's the first week in August.
So that, August 3rd?
That-
Yes, I mean-
August 3rd?
I'll be away, but I could watch it.
That would work.
So in terms of agenda items, we're going to have the Highland Member Care hearing, and that's being continued until which date? It's not, we're going to not be talking-
That's August 10th.
That's the 10th, okay. And so, and Tim and Josh, are there other new agenda items, new applications that will be coming in?
Tim, I don't, I don't have anything on my doc, but-
No, nothing.
So if we had, I'm okay with doing it either the regularly scheduled date in July or the first week in August. My, I don't think that'll impact the work too much. My concern would be going from the 10th of August to whatever the equivalent second week in September is, which would be a month.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. It was, we would, that would be, we would have our meeting on the 10th of August and the 24th, we would meet on the 24th.
All right, I misunderstood then, okay.
Sorry, it's just July, I'm sorry if I misspoke. So it's the July, it's our second meeting in July-
Okay.
-that I would consider, that we consider not having, or we could meet, and then what I was going to suggest is in lieu of that, so we aren't missing an extra meeting, meeting the week of either, you know, the 3rd and then again on the 10th.
Okay. So the discussion is we either meet the 27th of July or we meet the 3rd of August. The 27th, we would not have Meredith, the 3rd, we would not have Maggie.
Correct.
Would we, would we throw, instead have one on the 16th? Or the 17th of August, so it'd be 10, 17, and 24?
In a row.
If need be, not idea.
Or the 3rd, 17th, and the 31st.
10, 7, August 10th, August 17th, and August 24th.
Is anyone else going?
Yeah, we've agreed to move, yeah, the hearing to the 10th, so.
Into 24th, I'll have to zoom in, but, because I'll be at the Cape that week, but it's not something that we need to plan around.
Yeah.
I guess the, again, it's, we have the forum on the 17th. We're going to get feedback, but we won't be discussing that feedback, and the consultants will need some direction. My concern would be losing three weeks of time for their work without direction.
What three weeks are you concerned with?
The 17th would be the forum-
Yeah.
-of July. And if we don't meet, if we don't meet until the 3rd, we have three weeks.
The two and a half weeks.
Yeah, the two and a half, maybe.
So I'm fine if you, if the board wants to continue, you know, to meet. And Cheryl could run that meeting? Or we're waiting until the 3rd?
So there's no public hearing that we know?
Not in July.
Not in July, yeah, okay.
Ned, did you have a comment? Yes?
Yeah, I guess the one question would be if we don't close the hearing on 152 Robin Street tonight, if there's a request for further information, either the 24th or the 3rd would be appropriate to have available as a second meeting to continue and close the hearing. I just, I would just put that out, that it might be helpful, and particularly if the board had other business to take up within that timeframe.
Yeah, I also, I feel the same. We should meet on the 27th or the 3rd. I don't think we should leave such a long gap, so.
So, yeah, I-
I think you and Meredith should do it on purpose, is, okay?
Yeah, I don't want to be the one making the call.
I could try to zoom in on the 3rd. So if Meredith is definitely not available, then I could try to zoom in.
Okay, so-
So I probably have a better chance of zooming in.
So decision made. We will meet on the 3rd, August 3rd.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
And then your subsequent meetings will be the 10th and the 24th of that month.
Correct.
Great.
Correct. So the 3rd, the 10th, and the 24th. And our public forum on Monday night, the 17th.
Right.
At 7:00 PM. Okay, great, thank you for that. I, that'll work. Okay, so now, Ned, would you like to begin with the 152 Robin Street, or should we, we could also, for those who might be interested in Highland Street, let them know that that is being moved?
Meredith, before you go, does Tim have a staff update, or is there no update for staff?
He provided his update on-
Yeah, chatted briefly about the East Milton MAPC team coming in on August 10th.
That's it? Okay, great, thank you.
That was his update. Terrific. Okay, so with that, I would like to now open the 111 Highland Street Member Care Facility Special Permit Public Hearing. And we, per the request of the applicant, we are moving the next meeting for that hearing to August 10th. Okay?
So-
So can I have a motion to move the hearing?
To continue, I'll make a motion to-
To continue the hearing?
Right, to continue the hearing for, the public hearing for the 111 Highland Street Member Care Facility Special Permit to our August 10th meeting at 7:05.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Roll call since I'm not here. Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And with that, I will now close the public hearing for 111 Highland Street. Thank you. And now, we can now open the public hearing for 152 Robin Street Site Plan Approval. And with that, I'll let Ned make the introduction.
Great, thank you very much, Meredith, members of the board. For the record, Ned's working in Council for Community in Boston LLC, which is the owner and applicant. He owns the property near 152 Robin Street and is proposing to develop a small retail farm stand and greenhouse in accordance with the provisions, authorization under the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 3, which is the state zoning statute. I think Joe Prandak, in his letter, laid out pretty clearly the authorization for this and what requires site plan approval because it is a business use with more than 800 square feet of new building. I'm joined, and I think at, in the room, by Brian Johnson, who is, lives at 152 Robin Street and is the owner of Community in Boston LLC and is the applicant, and his engineer, Roderick Frandino, who has developed the site plan and the stormwater management plan. And with that, I will introduce Brian to give a brief overview of himself and his plans for developing this farm stand and greenhouse, and then we'll turn it to Rod to go through the site plan in particular. Assume that they've joined you at the table. And Josh, you have access, it looks like, to the plans and other materials that we-
So these are the site plans, and you can just ask me to go to the-
Yes.
-proceeding sheets?
Hello, I'm Brian Johnson, 152 Robin Street, applicant for Common Sense Farm Market. I guess I'd just say the lot there, as you can see, it's a large lot, it's about four and a half acres. And when we got it, we thought it'd be a really wonderful use of it to do some light agriculture there and make that available to the town and the neighborhood. So we've, we've started some of that, we have some gardens going, and, but we'd like to do some more and have a way to make it available to people. So that's really the, you know, the impetus behind our application here, that the picture there, the rendering, that's what we intend to build. If it's approved, that's what we'd like to do. We'd really like to make something that's just tasteful and fits in with the neighborhood. And then as far as the greenhouse, these images over here is what we have in mind, the greenhouse and the beds for planting. And just like to provide produce and farm products from the site there, as well as some others maybe from the local area, to make available to the neighborhood. So that's, that's our intention, that's our hope. Happy to hear any questions.
Brian, you talked a little bit about anticipated hours of operation, things of that nature.
We don't have, we haven't settled on like firm hours, but we're, we think like an eight-to-eight kind of thing, maybe, obviously just during the day. Something that maybe people could pick up something before they go to work or when they got home from work, something like that, what we'd anticipate. We have, I don't know if you can go to the next page there. Sorry, the third one. So we have, we have seven parking spaces designed, we have a, there's an existing, there's two entrances right now to the, just two driveway openings to the property. So there would be one would stay for the residents, and there'd be one exclusively for the, for the use for the, for the farm market. And then we provide seven parking spaces, so we feel that would, that would serve the traffic that we would expect to have. Anything else, Ned, that you-
No, I think for now, and then obviously if there are questions about that, we can get into that. And then perhaps if Rod could go through the site plan, the specifics dealing with issues of stormwater. You know, one of these that they're doing is a significant number of mature trees, and there's a real goal to protect those trees. We haven't submitted a specific pre-preservation plan, but there is a goal to preserve all of those trees. Buildings will be placed in locations that would not affect those trees, and so with that, let me end it to Rod Frandino.
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, I'm glad you brought that up, Ned, about the trees, because our plan, the site for the market building as well as the greenhouse is, there's no trees in that area right now, it's all brass, so all trees stay. And we love the trees, we don't want to take any down, so.
Good evening. Rod Frandino, licensed land surveyor here in Massachusetts and several other states. And I've worked with Brian on a couple of projects already, he's an instructional outfit that I've worked for at different times. And here at his home site, what I'd like to emphasize is the design of, a location of the building being 30 feet beyond the setback in, in the lay of the landscape where minimal earthwork and movement is going to occur, and all the trees are preserved. So that's a significant aspect of this site we thought would bring attention, we should bring attention to. It also creates the buffer as one's traveling down the road not to, you know, some people like to show off their house and bring it right up front. Well, we want this to be settled in and be part of- Well, we want this to be settled in and be part of the landscape. As you can see, it's a very nice structure. And so we situated it back from the road. And with that, we're able to also direct runoff into a rain garden and into an underground gallery. So environmentally, firstly, there's no designated priority or estimated habitats within the area, in the proximity of the area, according to the Natural Heritage and Danger Species website. And then the only stream or wetland issue is, in proximity, is actually beyond the 200-foot regulatory distance. It's about 260 feet to where we're going to begin to break ground. So we clear that. And the runoff for the entire site, this is the break of ground here, and all of it, all of the work is going to be on this slope. And so what we have is a modest stormwater plan that's going to deal with a two-inch sudden and awful event, one out. And to be conveyed through three management installations. One's the swale and basically for conveyance into the rain garden, which we hope to become, you know, beneficial to the flora and fauna of the area and have an actual succession.
If you keep going up, can you grab one of those microphones?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. This one?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd just like to touch the map because, so this rain garden here is going to capture all the sheet flow and overland flow with the conveyance swale. And then when that tops off, it's, it's built for twice the capacity of the flow. But if it does, it'll have to be managed. But if it tops off, we do have a structure that will go down to a manhole, which is capturing all the, the roof and impervious of the structure. And that's going into the manhole. And then we have the subsurface detention galleries, which is, if you could raise a plan. Those are cultech chambers. They're very common and very effective. And that will also be trapping overland flow into a trench drain in that parking area. Subsurface conditions, we did, with my consulting engineer, we did a soil analysis and found it to be indeed canton soils, sandy loam. And this, in fact, having up to 30% gravel and three-inch minor stone, which increases permeability. So we're looking for it to handle. In fact, what we want to stress also is, there right now currently, there's no storm drainage. I happen to be able to come to a, come to the site after a storm and I could see the overland flow and where it ended up. And basically, it all came right down here and into this neighbor's yard and, and out. And what we're going to do is capture this and detain it and infiltrate it through those two systems. I wanted to mention also, as far as work, we're gonna, there's a silt fence here, you know, the, the structural silt fence where you dig four inches into the ground and you place your hay bales on the upside, that's going to be also up here. I didn't put it on the plan. This will be for this detention, this earthwork, and then there'll be another one up here for this earthwork. I mean, that's only what should happen. So I just failed to put that on the plan there, but I did want to mention that. Yeah. Anything else, Ned, or?
Just maybe you could touch quickly on location and style of lighting.
Okay. I would, there's a nice lamp that Brian came up with. We're gonna have.
Microphone.
Oh, yeah, microphone. We're gonna have a nice architectural lamps, two at the, two at the entrance, one at the beginning of the parking, two at the entrance of the walkway. And then we just talked about having one at the handicap access. There is a 2% max slope on a three-foot wide brick walkway coming in from the west. And that's going to have a lamp too. So it'll be seven in all for lighting. And that's time sensitive or light sensitive? How's that, how's that lighting going? You have a shut-off timer?
Yeah, the timer to go off, I think.
Okay, so it's, it's timed?
And they're, they're very, like amber, sorry, just amber type, just a decorative, small decorative light posts. No, no street light type things or anything like that. Just a short decorative light post with amber light, lighting is what we're intending.
That's great. Your, your plan does say five lampposts on the site, on what we have? So that just might need to be updated on the plan?
Yes.
And the height of those lampposts?
I'll just add here, oh, yeah, there's a picture. If, if five is sufficient, okay. If five is sufficient, we're happy with that. We just want to make sure the paths are sufficiently lit. And if we need to add one for the handicap path, then, then we could. But we, we don't want to put any more lights than are necessary for safety.
My only question, we talked about this yesterday, was whether it would be necessary to have a light post between the retail building and the greenhouse? I'm not sure there's, I'm not sure there's one back there.
We're happy to add one if it would be, if it would be good. The greenhouse is only used during the day. So I don't know that one is necessary, but we're happy to add one for, for safety of anyone walking over there.
Is the greenhouse? I guess the question really for you, Brian, would be operationally, if the greenhouse is only going to be used during the day, well, if it's used in the winter and, you know, sundown in the middle of winter is early, would it, would you need it on after 5:00 or after 4:30 when the sun goes down in, you know, late December or early January to provide safe access? So I think that's an operational question. If it is, then the plan should be amended to show a location for that.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're happy to add one.
Other than that, I think there was one question that we looked at yesterday, which whether this, you know that Robbins Street is a scenic road. There is some minor modification to the stone wall on the southerly side of the driveway end, but it does not affect the scenic road bylaw, which, which requires, you would need permission from the planning board to cut if there were, up to, if there were more than 18 linear feet of stone wall. I think in this case, it's, it's three or four feet that are being cut back to provide a slightly wider opening and safer opening from Robbins Street.
I did want to mention that, I think I have removed stone, removed stone wall, but I did want to say, we should say remove and reinstall along the bend. So dry, dry placement of stone. It's not just a removal, it's actually just a movement, not a remove. We do like the stone walls and we want to keep them.
So do we.
Could you, could you walk through, I'm, I'm trying to follow, if you would, your utility intentions? Would you mind walking through what you intend to do with utilities?
The market building will have two bathrooms and one customer, one worker unit. The estimated discharge is 260 gallons per day. We have a proposed sewer outlet here with a cleanout. And then a connection to the existing sewer exiting the residence house that is currently functioning and runs to the street.
It connects in the driveway, so.
Yeah, it'll be connecting to the driveway.
Connecting into the existing one in the driveway.
And the grades are such that it'll be about two feet below that pipe that's over the top there. There's an eight-inch drainage pipe and that's going to run two feet, 1.75 above the sewer, estimated sewer depth, which we're estimating to be four feet.
And how are you handling water?
Okay, the well is served by a drilled well. The house is served by a drilled well. And they're going to re, they're going to install a new water line from the house to the building. That's the PW. I failed to put that on my legend, but I did on a more recent plan. It's proposed water.
It comes off the existing well.
Comes off an existing drill.
Okay. And you have a public service to the house as well, right? It looks like you have water from a well and water from the street?
We do, the, the water from the street, the meter's been removed when we installed the well. We swapped over from town water to well water. We still have the line, but no meter because we're on the well now. So they, the, the water department swapped this over. Sorry.
Just following up on that, the, for the electrical, the utility poles, is there currently above ground, I'm assuming, electric? And will you be maintaining that as it exists, those utility lines? Or are you bringing in other utilities? Or will they be brought in underground for electric?
Electric will come, we have a large, we have a large enough service in the house to service this from that. So we will operate bringing in a new service from the street. There is a power pole that comes, an overhead service to the house right now. We would actually really like to eliminate that pole.
Yeah, that would be nice.
It would, it would look, it would be a lot more aesthetically pleasing. But we have to, obviously, we have to talk to the power company and find out if that's possible. That's our hope, is to eliminate the pole.
That would be great, yeah.
From there, the, the market is serviced from the house power underground.
Other questions from the board?
The greenhouse reflects no utilities? Is that how it will be? There'll be no utilities in the greenhouse?
No, actually, there, there will be, yeah, there should. We do need to put water in the greenhouse for watering the plants and we do need to have some lights in there. So yes, it should show, I guess, another line over there.
If you could update your utility plan, that'd be helpful.
Sure, yeah.
And Cheryl, are you familiar with how in the past we've, we've, how the town has handled a separate sewer connection, you know, to the primary sewer?
I'm not, no.
Yeah. We'd just have to, that'd have to be reviewed, you know, with.
That was, well, my question was going to be whether the town engineer has reviewed the plan, I think for utilities, for stormwater.
So Marina has these plans.
Okay, great.
So I'll make sure, I'll, I'll flag that sewer issue for her if she hasn't noticed it already.
Great.
We understood that she was reviewing the plan. We didn't know what the status of that review was as of this afternoon.
So Sean, if you have completed your comments, I do have a couple of comments and questions.
I think I have.
Okay. Just from a site planning perspective, I understand your stated goal of not disturbing trees. But in looking at the existing house, as you call it, the structure, it's, has a lot of character itself. It's a center, enter, central entrance with a large lawn in front of it. And I'm trying to understand how these new structures are going to sort of have a, sort of sense of place with respect to that home, that structure. So I'm not understanding the site plan in the relationship to that existing, you know, pretty large building. So, you know, one might expect with that kind of formal site plan and building of that nature to have something coming off of the center and then maybe off to the sides of that. So I'm a little, I guess, unsure that this is going to have this sort of aesthetic juxtaposition of pieces that might be a little bit odd. So I just wonder if you could explain beyond the tree, if you've had some other consideration that's really driving the position of the structures?
I can speak to that. The, so as you can see here on the plan, the house faces this way.
Right.
So we've set the building off to the side so as to not block that, like you said, that nice kind of center entrance view of the house. Our intention is to not block that, but to have it over to the side.
So I'm, I'm wondering about the greenhouse, the, like the geometry, the placement of the greenhouse relative to the farm market building being at a different angle and sort of being a little off-center to the sort of front of the house. And I'm just wondering if there's something, I was looking at the 3D view, whether you turned the greenhouse a bit and maybe you have your rain garden in between the two structures? Or something where the, sort of the, the formality of the existing house and the, and the organization of the new pieces seem to have some relationship to one another? Am I making myself kind of clear, as you understood?
I don't think the greenhouse is going to be large enough or tall enough to have an impact so much on the view of the house because the house is very large and tall. If you feel it'd be better to turn it a little bit, you know, I don't see any problem with doing that necessarily. We thought they kind of worked together a little bit well like this, but we're, we're happy for input. Definitely want it to look nice, so.
I, I don't know if others have any thoughts about that before I move on to other comments, but.
I think, I think just one other comment with respect to that, I mean, the location is designed to make it somewhat proximate to that southerly driveway so that traffic comes in and comes out, doesn't traverse through the entire property. So, you know, the, the focus of the, the location of the building would be closer to the driveway engine instead of the way.
The farm building, Ned?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the farm building, you know, nestled sort of between the trees there seems to be a little more successful than the greenhouse. And, you know, maybe the farm building, you could walk out of the farm building, have some relationship to the raised beds and the greenhouse and the, so that if this is something that's meant to be an amenity to the community, sort of having, seeing where things are growing that you're buying, right? So it's not just the back of the, so like right now, there's that path that comes off of the covered roof, right? And you have the rain garden on the right. And what if you positioned the greenhouse a little closer to the, to the market building so that you preserve more of your lawn in front, so that the presentation of the house, you know, still remains? And so I, I don't know if, I know you've said that you've, you've had the, the land surveyor make the presentation, whether you've discussed any of this with a landscape architect or an architect who can help massage these sort of design features. I think it could make it even better, more attractive for you. But I'll leave that with you to consider. And then I'll just, I do have a couple of other questions.
I have a point, yeah. So, so I'm excited for the project and.
So I'm excited for the project and in a similar situation where my family lives at our nursery farm. So I had just a couple thoughts that. From a personal perspective, I wonder if your family might want a little bit more separation from your business. And you put in long days and when you're not at work, it's sometimes nice not to see your customers, even though you like them a lot. So. The other thing I was thinking was just for future, if forever, if for some reason. You ever wanted to subdivide, are you in an acre, is that an acre zone?
Yeah, it's 40, 40,000 square feet.
So if you have, you know, close to five acres, you have the potential down the road to subdivide. Not that you want to, but perhaps for future, for placement of buildings, it might be nice if you ever need to subdivide, that your buildings are placed in such a way that it makes the subdivision. A little bit easier. So if you had to have, you know, 150 feet, so maybe your farm building should be in its own parcel. But that's just a, from a future standpoint. And I really like the look of your farm building, but your house is just beautiful. And to Cheryl's point, they're, they're a little bit dissimilar in the, in the architecture. So I'm not, I am a little bit afraid that the placement of the farm structure might hide how pretty your house is. It's such a pretty house. And we as a town are lucky to have it and you're preserving it. So I just would hate for it to take away from, from each other, because all the buildings are so pretty. So.
As far as the, your thought about the privacy from the house, there is a large maple, it's a 24-inch maple right here. Right in between, that does provide. Some level of distinction there between the two. And we have considered also adding some shrubbery. You know, once it's built. Whatever would look nice to create a little bit of, a little bit of. Leafy, leafy barrier between there. I did want to mention too, just for comments about the placement, about the placement of the greenhouse. If we bring the greenhouse too close to the market building, then we lose the sun, which is obviously what the greenhouse needs from, from the shade of all the trees over here. So it wouldn't be able to move. Very much at all in that direction, or else it wouldn't be a greenhouse that would work anymore.
Well, maybe.
We could turn it slightly if, you know. This is a good placement for the sun.
I get your point about the sun.
We didn't feel it would take away from anything else.
I think. If we think about the, the structures, the three structures, we have the brick masonry, sort of more traditional looking residence. The kind of country looking market building. And then the greenhouse, which, you know, could work stylistically with that, with that house, I think, just fine. So it's just a question of position, the position on the site, which to me right now doesn't quite seem to gel. But, you know, it might be helpful if you had a photograph from the street where you could, you know, do a sketch since someone's been able to do these sketches, you know, try, put the two structures in, in a photograph. That gives an idea of how they might look from the street and you have that now?
A photograph that shows a little bit, pass it around or whatever. Maybe gives a little bit of a perspective, the, this is the street here and the trees. The market building would be right here and the greenhouse is right kind of here.
So that's with your back to your house?
This is taken from probably about here, looking up this direction.
I'd like to suggest we do a site visit and we can, maybe you can stake where these structures would go. So that we don't have to maybe take.
That would be great.
So much time tonight on that kind of comment, but I don't particularly have. I think the greenhouse structure, it looks attractive, I think what you're showing there looks attractive. And I don't have a particular problem with, with the, the market building, it's just the juxtaposition of the three. So I think if we could see it on the site, that, that might be helpful. And then I just.
We'd be, we'd be happy to have you visit the.
Great.
That'd be great.
I wanted to ask, well, your, the widening of the driveway. With seven parking spaces, I'm wondering if you really need to widen it to a 35-foot radius? That seems pretty wide for this type of use.
The radius is, is existing.
It says it's being widened here, so.
Right now it's 14 feet. Once you come into the radiuses, it's 14 feet.
He's talking about the width now.
The width. And we felt it would be safer if it was 18 feet, but the radius is existing and the radius doesn't change. It would just scoot over a few feet.
Well, it says drive entrance widen to 35 feet, 20-foot curb radius.
She's talking about that. These are the 35 foot, see this is more of a, eh, 15. Maybe 20, this is 35. So, so this major cut here, safety.
But are you anticipating, I mean, that might be something I envisioned for trucks. Are you anticipating large trucks coming in here?
No, we're, we're expecting small truck delivery.
Small truck meaning? Do you have a sense of what, Maggie probably has a better idea of what, what I might be getting at, but.
Like a box truck?
Yeah.
More, more than a tractor trailer?
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't be expecting tractor trailer deliveries.
Well, except for if you needed to bring in some compost, they, it would probably come in on a tractor trailer. So, so, so they probably need. The opening, I don't know if you need 35. But you probably would need the opening to be able to make for the, a delivery of compost or mulch.
That's a 20-foot curb radius. Oh, that's a 20-foot curb radius, widen to 35 feet here, yeah, that's what you're questioning.
Yeah, it's just, you know, on a scenic road, you have a very wide opening when you don't have it. And if you don't need it that wide, it's better to not have it that wide, you know, in our scenic road. It's less stone wall. And it begins to look more commercial.
We, we could stake out.
Do that, okay.
The proposed versus what's there and you could review it when you come to the site.
And, and Tim, can we? Tim, can we also ask Marina, town engineer, what her recommendation would be given the use so that we can right-size that?
You talk about the driveway entrance?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then my, my one other comment for, oh, two other comments for now. Our question is one and then a comment's another. Is the wood fence that's there, is that still there? I don't, no, okay, so that was just, that was taken down. And you don't plan to put any fencing up now?
No.
Okay. And, and then on the light fixture, I'd like to see a cut sheet actually, because I.
It's in the submission.
It wasn't in our packet, so, so. And. You know, we typically. And this is one of these things where it's considered kind of a commercial use. We typically like to have the dark sky compliant so that there's cutoff, so that the light's not, I mean, this, you're not proposing a lot of lighting fixtures, but we don't know how many foot candles in total. So we usually on a site plan approval or an application like this, would like to see a photometric plan. But I, I'm happy to start with seeing a cut sheet of the fixture and seeing what the light output is on it.
Ned, are you able to share that with them or the one that you have up there?
It needs to be more than a photograph, though, it needs to be like the manufacturer's technical data on the fixture. Yeah.
Ned, if you have that, I can give you the screen.
I think Ned may have stepped away for a moment. There he is.
Well, those are my comments for now, thank you.
Sorry, I did not have the cut sheet to provide, but we can get those, we submit those.
Could I ask two additional questions? Will the.
Yes, Sean.
Thank you, will the farm market building have a basement?
No.
Okay. And, and what is the area that you intend to, where is the area that you intend to grow on the site? Are you growing only in the greenhouse and the planters, or are you growing any of the other area?
We have an existing garden that's toward the back of the property. Would it be on your existing?
You can back it up.
Is this it?
No, that's an existing garage, but it's, it's down in here, in this back area right here. It's an existing garden space. So we also have blueberry bushes, existing blueberry bushes up in the front. And we potentially like to plant a few more of those, maybe a few fruit trees.
Okay, I can pick it up now off your existing conditions plan. Below that block building on the left-hand side, there's a note that says garden. But it doesn't really depict very well how big that area is. It just, it just references garden over there.
Yeah, so what's the size of the existing garden area and then also the proposed beds? Like on that picture up there, you have your greenhouse with the growing beds.
Do you like like a total square footage or something?
Yeah, just rough.
Not for today, but if you, if you could.
Yeah.
If you could identify the garden area for us, that, that'd be great.
And maybe we could walk that when we, sort of see that staked out when we walk the property?
Sure.
That'd be great. Any other members of the board with any questions?
Yeah, so the other member, my question, sorry, is have you?
Yeah.
Talked to your neighbors and have you gotten input from them?
Yes, yes, I am a town meeting member, a neighbor of mine.
And if you could introduce your name and address, I'm sorry.
My name is Aqua Ebong, I'm a town meeting member and live a few hundred feet away from this. While we know the board will do a special review, I want to let you know there's no significant objection to the ongoing projects. The people who live there are very friendly. We know that even after you approve from my interaction with our neighbors there, if we feel there's something wrong, we could go to him and he would take our objection seriously. That's why I came down this evening to express that we would support this effort. We expect you to still do your thorough review as you always do, but we do support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. In the winter and we had. Probably 25 or 30 neighbors, I would say, come over and they were all enthusiastic and supportive.
Something for West Milton.
From the point in time that you start the project, to the point in time when you're complete and ready to operate, how long would that be? It's not a very large project, I just feel for the neighbors, it's nice for the neighbors to understand how long the period of time of disturbance would be.
Yeah, we would. Think it would be under a year, but I would say we'd get the structure up and the, and the outside elements done much quicker than that. Hopefully in the first six months of that maybe, and then, you know, finish it out from there.
And when are you anticipating your opening day, this, this fall or next spring?
Hopefully next spring, yeah. We have to. Do the permitting process obviously after this, so. But we, we would hope to start this fall and get this, get the shell up and then finish it out from there.
So I just had a question, the, you know, I think this is, this would be a wonderful addition to the town of Milton. I love the agricultural aspect of this and it really, it's, it's so refreshing to see great architecture that comes in that really does fit into, when we talk about the character of Milton, this is what we're talking, you know, the feel and sense of a rural community. And, but my, my question is, and it's a beautiful illustration, but it is just an illustration and sometimes we get an illustration and then the actual architectural plans have changed significantly. I, I appreciate starting with this, but are there more detailed, you know, architectural plans that would, would let us know that what, what we're seeing here is actually what you're going to be building?
Yes, he's showing them there, yeah, the, the rendering was done based on, the architectural plan was done first and the rendering was based on that.
So I guess, you know, having more, you know, dimensions, heights. And, and maybe a list of materials, I would be interested in, it looks like a, a metal roof, which I think would, is very appropriate on this. But are it, are those, I don't know if the rest of the roof is asphalt shingles, is it clabbered siding? Because there's a big difference in. In, you know, in achieving the look that we're seeing here based on the materials that are selected. And I'm, I'm sure. You're wanting for it to look as attractive as possible, but it would be nice to know just a little bit more specifically what, what materials you'll be using. And color and so forth.
Yeah, we're happy to add more details, we, we do intend to use a metal roof, like you said, and clabbered siding like is shown on the plans. The dimensions are on there and the height is indicated in the application. If there's more details you'd like us to add, we can.
Is it, is it a stain, are you going with a stained finish or are those pre-painted clabbered or? Have you gotten to that level of detail yet?
No, we haven't, we definitely plan some sort of earth tone color, whether it's a natural or an earth tone paint. We haven't, we haven't decided yet.
Yeah, I had the same question on just the lighting, which I, the lighting is beautiful. I love the lampposts you've selected, I think they're, will be beautiful in this area. The only other question I had is, I like that you show a little sign, you know, sort of up top the common sense farm market. What are you thinking right now as far as signage? You know, typically on a building like this, you might see something that's wall mounted. You know, a wooden sign, you know, something very subtle. I think the neighbors wouldn't want it, you know, anything too big, large, you know, too commercial looking, more like a farm stand. And I was wondering your thoughts on that. For signage.
Yeah, the sign, the plan for the sign is, is that design that's on there. And that would be mounted on the building.
Okay.
We had considered a, a small version of that out by the entrance, but that's, that would be subject to your, if you think it's good.
Well, sign review committee would actually, yeah, ultimately, look at that, that's great, that sounds very nice. Yeah, should we try to schedule the site walk at this time? Is there a date? That members might want to meet? To do that? Ned, do you want to look at your calendar and send Tim something and maybe we circulate it offline?
Well, it's gonna be, well, I'm not sure you, whether you would want to continue the public hearing. public hearing to that specific time. One thought would be, if you're gonna meet on August 3, and maybe you could do it at 5:30 on August 3 in the afternoon, and then from there, go over to Town Hall for your 7 o'clock meeting, if that would make sense. Weekends, I think, would be, could be difficult, given summer.
Would that work for our members?
No, I won't be able to be there.
Oh, you're not gonna be there, yeah.
Meredith?
Yes?
It'd be good to have the response of our engineering department before we walk.
Maybe we can coordinate the site walk as a separate meeting. It wouldn't be part of the public hearing, because it would be scheduled as such, but we can, we could coordinate the timing of that through Tim, you know, subject to receiving the engineering analysis from Marina. I mean, we're anxious to see that as well, so.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, Ned, a separate meeting, just to post it, because we'll all be there, but it wouldn't be a public hearing.
It wouldn't be a public hearing.
Right. So, maybe, Tim, maybe we can, you know, circulate some dates, get with Ned and the applicant, to see what would work with them, and we could send something, an email out.
Yeah, certainly, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Meredith, I had a couple notes and questions before we moved on. So, just a couple things. Relative to the sign, Meredith was right. You will need to get some relief for the sign. The sign review committee, signs aren't allowed in the residential districts, but for commercial uses that are approved via site plan approval, irrespective of anything, and we'll talk to the building commissioner about exactly how he interprets the zoning bylaw here, you'll need to go in front of the sign review committee at some point. So, we can, we can certainly coordinate that through my office, you know, if and when you've got dimensions, materials, and kind of a placement plan for your signage, you know, we can certainly do that. The other thing that I wanted to have the applicant talk through is, you know, we're here under site plan approval, because as an agricultural use, there's, it's a Dover Amendment protected use, not dissimilar from daycare, church, school, you know, these are other sort of Dover Amendment uses that we've done site plan approval before. There are some wrinkles relative to agricultural uses in terms of the size of the parcel, which is a relatively straightforward threshold, but then also what is either grown or sold on the site. And so, as a part of this decision, there will have to be some provisions for documentation and monitoring of sales from the site. But I wanted to have the applicant kind of talk through, you know, what do you anticipate growing on site, what do you anticipate selling from other Massachusetts farms, and sort of how do you anticipate sort of hitting those metrics that the state's definition of agricultural use lays out?
So, we, obviously, we plan to grow, to grow produce in the greenhouse and the beds surrounding it, as well as the garden that is already there. Like I said earlier, we also plan to grow some fruit, blueberries, things of that nature, have those available. We also want to probably have some chickens. We'd like to have local eggs, and we'd like to make things like baked goods, muffins, things like that onsite as well. We've already discussed with the, I think it's under the health department, the, having a commercial kitchen to be able to make those kinds of things, to provide them in here. There is a farm in Rainham, Mass, that we are already somewhat connected with and plan to be connected with and get additional produce from them, things that we are able to grow on the site. Does that answer your question, Tim?
Mostly, and again, you know, this will be sort of an ongoing, you know, monitoring situation, but I guess if you can kind of speak generally, you know, because there are two different sets of thresholds that you could potentially hit to sort of maintain an agricultural exemption. You know, one of them, at least 25% of the products for sale during the months of June, July, August, and September, based on gross sales or volume, are grown on site, or at least 25 of the products for sale are produced on site annually, and at least 50% of the products produced off-site are from another agricultural facility within Massachusetts. Do you anticipate kind of hitting the one or the other more? I guess I want to make sure that you've got, like, a strategy for maintaining this exemption that you can be confident in, you know, based on either how much volume you plan on growing on site, or sort of just counting on off-site products and supplementing that with your onsite growing.
We were looking at the 25%, like you said, the 25% on site, and then the 50% in Massachusetts. That's the one that we have been looking at and planning to meet.
Okay. Thank you.
And Tim, I just want to follow up to the answer you were given. The commercial kitchen that you referenced, where would that be?
That's the existing kitchen in the house. There's a large kitchen existing in the house, and we've already gone through with them anything. There's just some small changes we need to do in there to make that a commercial kitchen to produce. Just, like I said, small things like baked goods and things like that, that we could make available on a daily basis.
Tim, does that become connected to the special permit, or is that just something that would be handled separately between the applicant and the Board of Health?
Yeah, I mean, that's also, I mean, and I'm wondering in terms of, like, a common victor or license to the select board. Ned, do you have any insight into kind of what the various licensing kind of pathways are here?
Well, I think they're varied. Obviously, Board of Health has jurisdiction over some things. Select Board may have jurisdiction over the issue of growing, of baking and selling baked goods through this facility. The, you know, we note that this is not a special permit. This is site plan approval, which is different. But, you know, and the building commissioner would have jurisdiction over, you know, meeting the annual thresholds that are required relative to the volume, the percentage of volume of materials that are grown on site and indoor, off-site within Massachusetts.
Yeah, Sean, so to kind of answer your question, you know, obviously, the physical site and the location of the building and all the normal things that go into site plan approval is here within the planning board's jurisdiction. The, you know, the site plan approval should have provision for whatever monitoring scheme we work through with the building commissioner, you know, relative to the agricultural use exemption. And, you know, we've, you know, we've done this before. It's sort of a known thing, and the state provides guidance on how to do that as well. You know, I would want to at least be clear on what other licenses, approvals, et cetera, are necessary, not necessarily to sort of condition or make mention in the site plan approval, but just so that as a part of this public hearing, you know, we all understand what other processes, you know, this project needs to go through in order to kind of achieve what its goals are. You know, if only because, you know, planning board tends to be a higher-profile venue that people are paying attention to. So, I think that's just something we want to have on the record with some amount of clarity. But, I mean, ultimately, what the planning board here is considering is, you know, the actual physical site, the buildings, the locations, the utilities, et cetera, and then, you know, what is defined as an agricultural, you know, use under state law, and kind of how we monitor that. One other quick thing-
I would just layer on that, that the issue of whether it's compliant with the agricultural uses, that issue resides with the building commissioner, does not reside with the planning board from a determination perspective.
Yeah, no, Ned, your point's well taken, but the way that that gets monitored, I feel, should be in the decision.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying that it's not part of the, it's not part of the approval.
Right, because it's as of right-
You don't have the jurisdiction to determine whether or not he qualifies for the exemption.
No, understood, but if, so, you know, 25% sales from products that are grown on site, if only 20% of sales in a given year are from onsite, you know, that becomes something that throws the site plan approval into, well, I mean, yeah, maybe help us walk through this, because-
It throws this building permit into question. That's a compliance with building permit requirement. It is not a compliance with special permit, with special, with site plan approval. His ongoing operation is subject to the oversight of the building department.
But I'm kind of following Tim's logic, too, in that the only reason it's before us as a site plan approval is because it's an exempt use. If it falls out of exemption, then it's no longer a site plan approval. It would need some other kind of permitting.
That's right, but that would be a determination to be made by the building commissioner, whether or not it could remain open, or whether it would require some other relief.
But wouldn't that be a trigger point for this, for out of compliance with the site plan approval?
That's the building commissioner's determination. Building commissioner is charged with determining whether and when someone with site plan approval is falling out of compliance with the requirements of the, of the, of either the building permit or the site plan approval process. You don't have jurisdiction to review compliance. You don't have jurisdiction to make, to penalize folks when they get out of compliance. All you can do is determine whether or not the site plan, as it's been presented, is adequate for the purpose laid out. It's for the building commissioner to monitor the compliance with site plan approval and other issues associated with the building permit, one of which would be that he's got to demonstrate annual sales. He's got to file those reports with the building commissioner.
I think, I think if I could, Mr. Prondak's letter is pretty clear. It does, what he wrote is, upon receipt of site plan approval and agreement of conditions 2, 3, and 4, 2, 3, and 4 are not ours, and our responsibility, they have to be somebody else's within the town. That's the way I read it. 2, 3, and 4 are the conditions that relate to the business, the percentage of, you know, products for sale, and things of that nature. So, you know, number one is obtaining site plan approval, which for the Milton Planning Board, in accordance with the Milton zoning bylaw. So, I think I understand, right, our lane is site plan approval. You know, the applicant, if the applicant cannot comply with 2, 3, and 4, you know, I understand it's kind of odd. It's a bit connected, but-
Yeah, you know, where Joe Prondak asked town council for a legal opinion on this, I just think it's worth going back to town council to confirm what this discussion, because it is one of those areas that the zoning is-
Let's say, for example, the childcare facility in Blueville Avenue ceased to operate in accordance with the special, with the site plan approval. You have no jurisdiction over that. That's the building commissioner's job. Once you've issued site plan approval, your job is done. You have no further jurisdiction.
Ned, I think the board understands that. I think Tim's question really was much more for the applicant, that should you obtain-
Well, I agree. I agree with that.
Yeah, if I could finish. Should you obtain site plan approval, you do have to meet other conditions, too. Site plan approval doesn't give you an operating business in compliance with the town. So, I think Tim was, Tim's question and his line of discussion is cautionary, more than it is anything else, in trying to, right? I think that's where you're going, Tim, but-
Yeah, yeah, and again, I think, you know, and this is a familiar situation for all of your approvals, you know, you do them, and then you hand them to the building commissioner. Building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer. This is a type of zoning kind of approval, so it's not an unfamiliar position. I guess, you know, in terms of where those requirements live and what the sort of the nature of the monitoring is, like biannual reports to the building commissioner, I feel like that should, that should be articulated in the decision, is kind of what I was getting at, so that, you know, everyone who sort of reads that decision understands what the parameters are, you know, for that.
I have no problem, I have no problem with that, and those types of conditions being written into the decision, because there are obviously requirements that they have to follow with the building.
We understood those conditions from the beginning. The building commissioner made those clear a while before he even wrote the letter, just saying, these are the things you'd have to meet, and so we went into it, understanding that.
Yeah, no, that's great. And also, we do have a new building commissioner. I want to make it very easy for him, so just making sure everything's written down somewhere in one place. The last thing I wanted to say before we get into broader public comment is, we did, I did send an email that my office received last week from, and I didn't catch the gentleman's name earlier, but it was from a Nick Goby on 45 Meeting House Lane. That was an email that he sent in, that I sent to the board, supporting the project. We also did get a call from, and let me make sure I have their names, Kevin and Patricia Donahue at 17 Meeting House Lane, also in a butter to the project, wanting to articulate their opposition to the approval. You know, they had concerns about stormwater impacts, especially relative to the creek that runs through the site. And so, I had asked them if they'd be able to put those comments in writing. I think they're, they're out of town this week, so spotty internet access, so I said that I would, I would pass along those concerns. Those are, you know, again, outside of what presumably you're about to hear from public comment. Those are the only two pieces of correspondence we got in relative to this project.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to go to the public for questions or comments. Seeing hands up, there's three or two now. 137 Robbins, if we can let, if you can unmute yourself. You're welcome. And state your name and your address, please, for the record. 137 Robbins.
Looks like they're still muted.
Still muted. All right, you know what? Let's come back. We'll go to the next person, and we're gonna come back to 137 Robbins, and he'll try to get, or she could get herself unmuted. Bob Wright, if you can unmute yourself, Bob, welcome. Good evening, and if you can state your address for the record. Bob, go ahead and speak. I'm able to hear you, Bob. You are muted. We're having some check to go to, oh, there.
Let me, let me try to, I'm gonna do this. Let me try to promote Bob to panelist and see if that works.
Okay.
Bob, are you able to hear us and speak?
I'll just note that when you get promoted to panelist, that you actually lose connection for about a minute while that process happens.
It appears that Bob is unmuted, though. Let's give him a minute to try- Let's give him a minute to try to connect.
All right, I'm going to try 137 Robbins.
Yeah, because 137 is now unmuted. Oh, now you're muted again, 137. You were unmuted. There.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hi there. So, I'm sorry about that. That might have been me. I'm not sure, but I'm actually Bob Wright and I'm 137 Robbins.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So, 137 Robbins is located directly across the street of this property. And I just wanted to start by saying I, I agree with some of the comments made earlier. I think the neighborhood is largely in favor of this. Um, you know, Maggie had a comment earlier on the greenhouse. You know, I personally think the neighborhood would prefer that it stays where it is instead of moving it so they don't have to, or don't have the option to subdivide in the future. I think the property is great right now and they've done a lot to beautify the, the area since they've moved in. Um, a couple of questions regarding the operations. So, we're curious when we will know what the hours are and whether this is a year-round operation. I don't think there's any concern really on the 8:00 AM hour, but the 8:00 PM, particularly in the wintertime, might be a bit of a annoyance as traffic exits that driveway. It will shine directly across the street into a couple neighbors', um, houses. So, I'm curious about that.
Uh, we do intend for it to be year-round. Um, like I said earlier, um, we haven't really determined for sure final hours. Um, we're certainly happy to consider those things. And maybe the hours, you know, should be sure in the winter.
But I, I guess my question is more around like, does the town have a say in what those hours are? I'm sure they do it to some capacity, but I'm not sure whether they can say has to be stopped at seven or has to be stopped at eight or whatever. That's for the planning board.
Yes, it can be tied with our permit agreed upon.
You know, I don't think it can be because it is an agricultural exemption.
All right. Um, why don't we get clarification on that? So, and it sounds like, it sounds like the applicant really does want to work with the neighborhood and sounds amenable to, to looking at those hours.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Um, second question I had, and I don't think this is the case, based on some of the conversations we've had with the, with the neighbors, but will there be any seating, you know, picnic tables or whatever where people can enjoy a, one of the baked goods that are made on-site or, um, you know, a pre-made salad or anything like that?
Yeah, we, we, we have the open porch, as you can see, on the side of the building, and, and we would, we would intend to have, um, some, you know, chairs and things out there and, yeah, possibly a picnic table.
Okay. And I guess the other, the other question.
And again, I'll just, I'll just add, we, we would certainly be open to, uh, to input from the neighborhood and especially from yourself being right there across the street because we don't want to do anything that's, um, too much. We want it to be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I don't envision large crowds, like, you know, you'd see a fortune in, in the fall or anything like that, but I just want to make sure that we can minimize the amount of, um, amount of people up front all the time if possible. Um, the other thing I would say is, you know, I, I know it was mentioned earlier, but I would ask you guys to think about reconsider the width of the driveway as well, the central driveway. Um, you know, I know you guys have a garbage truck that currently goes into that entranceway, so it seems like it might be wide enough for a, you know, for a medium-sized truck, a box truck or whatever. You know, you guys used the northern driveway to, you know, have, let's say, a larger truck, like a tree service truck or something like that, come in. So, I don't know if you, um, really need that exact width. Um, you know, it is pretty wide right now, so, you know, you might want to, when you guys do the walk-through, the site, the site visit, maybe you can consider that. Um, I don't think it's a huge issue either way, but preference would be to keep this done well, which looks great. And then I guess my other, my other comments are, you know, for the board, you know, what's the, what's the town regulation or the plan to deal with overflow traffic? You know, with only seven spaces, I, I would envision that, you know, we could have, um, some parking outside on a, on a fairly well-traveled, narrow road.
Ned, do you want to comment on that? What your, how you would handle that if there's more than seven customers who drive? You're muted, Ned.
Thank you. Um, I guess first question would be whether there's any parking allowed on Robbins Street. That would be a town, town issue to restrict parking on Robbins, if at all. I don't know what's currently authorized, uh, parking on Robbins Street, whether there is any parking allowed, but certainly that would be something the town should be encouraged to, uh, consider. Um, but in terms of overflow parking, I think there's adequate room on the, within the inter, internal driveways, particularly as you head towards the house to handle any overflow that might come into the site.
So, are you saying that we're comfortable with more than seven vehicles in that?
I think what we're saying is that we, at seven, we think is adequate to park the anticipated volume of vehicles that would be there at any one time. You know, obviously there's a fair amount of coming and going.
Yep.
Different times of day, but the likelihood that more than seven would be there at any one time is, is, uh, we don't think is, would happen. And if it did, if there was a small number of additional vehicles, there is room within the site and the existing site driveways to accommodate that.
Okay. Yep, no, I agree with that. I mean, there's definitely space for more than seven. Um, my concern, I guess, is more if there is outside, outside the property parking. Um, I don't believe, well, I know we don't have, um, regular parking on the street, on Robbins Street because it is narrow and well-traveled, but, um, I was just curious what the, what the town's thoughts were on that and whether, you know, i- is that part of the ultimate approval process for this? Not, not necessarily the planning board's site approval, but the town's final approval on this.
I think the jurisdiction might lay with the Traffic Commission and the Board.
Sure, yep.
If there is not currently, um, no parking allowed signs on the street, then certainly the neighborhood should petition, uh, through the, you know, Traffic, uh, Traffic Commission to have those type, that type of signage implemented.
I just want to add, if we think of the market as a commercial space at, our zoning bylaws generally require four spaces per thousand square feet of commercial space, and this is 1,120 square feet. So, seven would exceed what would be required, um, in our zoning generally for a commercial use.
That's a good, that's actually a good point, yeah.
And I would think. Robbins, is it, Robbins is an extremely narrow road. It's an old road. So, I would highly discourage any, any parking on that street. I think it would be dangerous for vehicles or people getting in and out of cars and, and really block a good percentage of that driveway. So, I think parking should remain on-site as much as possible.
And I would think it would be a, a neighborhood amenity. So, I would sort of picture the neighborhood walking or biking, um, and not needing a car.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that. And I, I certainly hope that the neighbors use the property as much as we can as a convenience. Um, I guess my, so my last question would be this is, again, this is really, it's a traffic question, so maybe it's supposed to go to the commissioner, Traffic Commissioner, but, you know, I would consider the driveway area almost a blind drive as you're coming down Robbins Street. So, I guess heading south from 138 down towards Canton Ave. So, is there a signage that's going to be required? Um, it's a fairly, the driveway kind of comes up on you. So, you're going around that turn and, and cars are not going around that turn at a slow pace. So, um, do you feel that there should, or will the Traffic Commissioner determine whether there should be signage? Um, and what could that signage be?
Um, that's, and that's an interesting question. Certainly, uh, there will, I think that the applicant would want to have a, a sign announcing that its presence, uh, but may also want to coordinate with, with Traffic Commission on other signage that would sort of, um, warn motorists coming down Robbins Street that there's this new, um, facility here in some way.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and I think that's really where it is. It's more of a warning or an alert that there is, you know, the potential for, for cars pulling out of that driveway. I, I'm probably thinking worst-case scenario, but it is, um, as Meredith mentioned, it's a, it's a fairly narrow road and highly traveled. So, um, just want to make sure that safety's considered. And that's all I had. So, um, you know, I guess I could close my comment saying, you know, we are, from a neighborhood standpoint, I think we are generally, um, in favor of this. So, um, hoping it does ultimately get approved with, you know, whatever necessary restrictions are, are placed on it. But, um, you know, we, we enjoy the, enjoy the neighbors and I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. Okay, um, and I'm seeing one other hand. We have a 33 Pope Hill Road. Um, you just muted yourself. If you can unmute, welcome in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. If you could state your name, please.
My name is Luke Bernard Val and I am, um, resident at 33 Pope Hill Road and.
Welcome.
Really benefited. I feel like, I just want to speak as to the character and my connection to this group. Um, and of course, I want to speak in favor of the project. I think it's a beautiful addition and it's really consonant with the values of Milton architecturally, I feel. And I've, uh, been a Milton resident for about 23 years now. So, I, um, Robbins Road is, is, is a scenic jogging path for me and I'm always going up the hill on my bike there. So, uh, going by that house is, uh, has, has always been, even before the community moved there, was always a place that I, um, really got a lot out of in terms of my own personal enjoyment. So, I, I just feel that there's a really wonderful match here in terms of what's going on with this project and my own history and evolution and, um, and experience in Milton. And, um, I've also have been to many of, uh, the community's events. I've been on-site. I've met many of their members and, um, genuine people, people who have loving hearts and are really a wonderful, wonderful, uh, group that bring a lot of character and spirituality and peace to the community. So, I feel that, uh, in addition to, to these plans, I think as, as neighbors, these people really bring a wonderful, uh, spirit of contribution and of community and of peace to the neighborhood, which I've experienced firsthand myself through, for the last four or five years, going to their events and meeting the people there and having gotten to know them. So, I just wanted to really speak, uh, in favor of the project, but more in favor of, uh, the community itself and their values and how that will also enrich our, our community. So, uh, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great comments. Um, I'm not seeing any other hands at this time.
I, I think we have another hand in the audience?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Please join us, yeah.
Please.
I acquire among 151 Crete Street, also town meeting member. I want to re-echo what the last speaker said. While the project is great, the people in that, uh, organization are even better. I believe that this board will do its best to ensure that safety and, uh, the project abides by the rule, but I also know that the group there, from my interaction with them, would make necessary adjustments if neighbors find things, um, inconvenient. I'd like to put my support to this. As I've mentioned earlier, I think it's an addition to our neighborhood. I understand the concerns about parking on Robbins Streets, but there are other adjacent streets where parking could be done and you just walk up if there were ever an event where you had 20 or 30 other people there. We work closely with this team. I have taken my, the time out of my day-to-day to support them and I pray that this board approves within the limits of the law what is necessary so that we can support and encourage this group to stay with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak?
There are no hands, Meredith.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? Um, any other comments from the board or closing comments from Ned before we move the public hearing?
I just have a quick question about trash and composting. I didn't see any dumpster or anything on-site. And now I'm making sure we can move a kitchen and more, what I feel is going to give more volume. How are you going to handle your trash? And then are you going to compost anywhere?
Uh, we do have an existing dumpster already on-site.
Where is that?
It will be, uh, it's, it's in the vicinity of the parking area, but we would move it over a little bit. Um, so it's a little further away from the parking.
Maybe like behind the building or just not visible from the street or?
Yeah, not, not visible from the street. Uh, we didn't, we didn't locate it specifically, but it would need to move over a little bit. But it's an existing dumpster, so it wouldn't be adding more dumpster.
I drove by yesterday. I didn't see it, but that's, that's not on you. That's on me.
It's behind a shed.
There you go.
It would just need to move over a little more.
Okay.
So, it would stay out of sight as it already is. Um, and, yeah, I would assume we would do some composting, um, probably near the back of the property where our existing garden is.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
It would be good to see that dumpster on the plan, um, understanding it already exists. We'll just want to see it on the plan.
Sure, okay.
Great. So, Ned, you're wanting to have this moved to the August 3rd date? Is that was?
I think at this point, yes. I would just ask Brian, you know, that's what, three weeks from now, um, if that was adequate time to adjust the plans as requested, uh, by the board. I would ask Ron, I guess, because Ron's got to produce. Um, and then separately, whether we can try, we can schedule a site walk between now and that day. Um, we can, but, but I think August 3rd would be a good marker. Um, if, if that's a meeting that's going to be held by the board, that would be a good marker for the next, for the next hearing.
Three weeks would be sufficient for a plan revision.
Tim, do you have a sense of when we'll get comments back from Marina, Town Engineer?
No, but, um, I, I don't think it'll take her long to, to do her review of this. So, um, we'll get a timeline tomorrow from her.
Okay, because I, it would be great if they did their, only had to do one set of revisions. They pick up any comments you may have as well.
Yeah, that'd be good. And just so, um, just want to make sure we're clear on what revisions to the plan we should make. Um, the ones I've got is show the location of the dumpster, add a, a line showing the water and power to the greenhouse, and add a light pole in the path from the market to the greenhouse. Is there anything additional?
Well, the question about the, the radius is a little bit, um, dependent on the site walk, right?
Right.
So, the other things that we talked about might be, um, maybe it's not possible to do a plan revision until after we do the site walk, but I'm just trying to have, um, all changes documented at once so you don't have to come back to yet another meeting. But it might be that you don't know what they, all those changes are until we do the site walk.
I think we, I think also.
And we hear from the Town Engineer.
Cut sheets for lighting?
Yes.
Do you have materials for, just a description of materials for the building, you know, metal roof, clamber, right, nature of colors?
metal roof, clamber, nature of colors, a sketch, sort of a sketch of the structure with a view from the street?
So my sense on that, Ned, is that wouldn't be necessary if we do the site walk when we look at the stakes?
Okay. Just updating the utilities, obviously Marina's comments with respect to that would be important.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I think you wanted dimensions on the size of the garden, sort of in the tail of the property, and the square footage of other garden area that would be approximate to this building.
Yes, that would be great.
So we'll go ahead and add those things. And then obviously, hopefully those comments from the town engineer will be available. And then I guess if there was anything further after the site walk, then, you know, we have to make those changes at that point. But we'll at least go ahead and do the ones that we know.
Okay.
You're muted, Meredith.
If you want to start working on a rough outline of a draft of a site plan approval, just...
I'll do that.
Based on at least what we've added and discussed tonight, that would be great.
Sure. I'm happy to start working on that.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
I'll just add from our end, as far as the site walk, we're happy to, anytime that works for all of you, we'll make work for sure.
Okay.
So are we going to continue to August 3rd at 7:00?
7:05?
No, that's when we did Highland.
Who's there?
Oh, no, we did the 10th.
No, you went to August 3rd.
Yeah, Highland is the 10th.
Sorry.
Which is good. We're separating out our public hearings. So that's, that'll be good. So yes, a motion to move the public hearing of 152 Robin Street, site plan approval to 7:05 on August 3rd. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the public hearing to 7:05 on August 3rd, 152 Robin Street.
Can I just make a friendly amendment to?
Oh, sorry. Sure. Go ahead.
To continue the hearing?
I'm sorry, to continue the hearing.
Continue.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. Roll call. All in favor. Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Looks like a great project. So.
It's going to be awesome.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we can now, I'm sorry?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ned. Have a good night.
Good night.
And thank you for indulging me on the time.
Yes, worked out.
I'm just going to run to the bathroom.
Okay. So we now can go to our new business, 193 Central Ave. We have a minor amendment of the site plan approval. And I think I saw Marion. We can bring Marion in? Welcome, Marion. Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody again on this warm night.
Yeah.
So if you'd like to just explain why I've had...
If you could, yeah, that would be great.
Once again, to talk about the landscaping plan at 193 Central Ave, I did send the board a letter, so you may have all seen that, just very simply to explain that the owner, Sunny Verma, has met with two of the neighbors who live directly across the street, and they have asked whether additional, three, additional evergreen trees or more evergreen trees could be planted in front of the property. They actually talked about a fence. Because of all the ledge in front of that property, it's very difficult to put a fence up. So the owner is very willing to do that, but would like to substitute for the three trees that we had originally agreed to in the back and put more trees in the front, which is where they're being requested. The tree location in the back that was agreed on at your meeting in, in September, I think, 2022, they're over, they're to the right and to the rear, and that was just sort of arbitrarily selected. We had some discussion about, well, what if we wanted to plant them to the left, or what if we wanted to change it? And it's really, you know, the only way to do that is to come back to the board and talk about it. So what we want to do tonight is ask you whether you would approve substituting the arborvitae's or white fir trees in front. These are both very fast-growing, thick trees designed to screen. And these neighbors are just looking for more of a screening to view. I mean, you know, the plantings are small right now. They will grow, but if you do the evergreens, they'll fill in quickly. So that's the request. And I don't know if Sunny Verma is here tonight, but whether he is or not, he's filled me, and then this was a, an onsite discussion that he had with these neighbors in front of the property. And it was probably, you know, sometime in early or middle June.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments from the board?
Meredith, I just had two questions for Marion. Good evening, Marion.
Good evening.
Would not planting the trees in the rear affect anyone? Is, is there anyone that desires those trees to be in there that wouldn't get that benefit?
Well, I mean, more trees are always good, but what we had talked about was whether you could put trees over to the left side in the rear. In the rear of this property, you can't do it because of the drainage structures that are underground, which are very important. And we had, you know, quite a while ago, that went back to the applicant's engineer for discussion. The other option for the future is that if the, if the property owners to the rear can secure ownership of the piece of land between this property and their property, which is in Land Court, I think, it's, there's a dispute litigation going on, if they can control, secure control of that, then planting trees at the edge of their property to the rear of this site would be a possibility. And there could be some, you know, agreement or, I mean, you know, the, the property, the school owner is more than willing to work with the neighbors, but we can't do anything about that right now. The trees over to the right side are just at the edge of another stand of trees. They don't serve any particular purpose. They would have been very nice. But where neighbors are asking for screening in front, I think if we could do it, we should, well, it's your decision. But I mean, I just think it would be great if we could agree to do that.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. With regard to the trees in front, would they present any, any visual issues for traffic, driving, or anything of that nature?
Well, the specific locations have to be chosen by the arbiter, by the applicant's arborist. And part of the issue is where can you plant them so that the roots will be, can be secure? You can't obstruct exiting and view from, so that will have to be considered. So you're certainly not going to be able to plant it right up against the edge, the very edge of the driveway. I'm not showing you locations right now because they haven't been determined yet. But the purpose of the trees is to provide more screening, so the locations will be chosen to try to have vigorous trees that will grow well and will spread out as much as possible to, basically to block the view, middle view of the property, not to block either of the two entrances.
Okay.
So I can tell you that they, we would be paying attention to that, but I don't have locations right now. And you certainly don't want to shine a tree right into the driveway.
Okay. Got it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I walk, you know, past this property all the time, and I actually think this would be a great improvement to the site, to, to add some screening and some buffer and soften that, the, the new asphalt driveway. It'll be, it would be, I think, really attractive because the plantings there currently are, are very small. I would prefer white fir to the arborvitae. I think arborvitae just can look very generic and, you know, not great. And actually, last summer, a lot of them didn't survive, which, one of the trees, as I'm sure your applicant knows, there's already one tree that's been, that's dead that has to be replaced there. But I think, you know, my preference would be the white fir and not arborvitae. But the board may have other opinions.
So I have a question. Has the landscape been completed as, as listed on the original application?
Well, I couldn't, as far as I know, it has. But you know, they're in the final stages of reviewing everything to see whether it's been done according to the plan and have their final occupancy permit and get their, their permit from the state. And I couldn't tell you exactly where they are in that process, but I know it's rather time-consuming and meticulous. It wasn't completed before Joe Prandak left, so now it's in the hands of the new building commissioner and the, and the assistant building commissioners. So I'm happy to update you on the status of that. But I believe all the plantings are installed, but the trees are not planted yet. So the three trees in the back were not planted yet. So we're not ripping them out or anything yet. We'd just be planting these instead.
Yes, so I walked...
And I can double check on, on the completion for you.
So I walked the property yesterday or the day before, and I think it's very sparse, so I hope it's not completed. There were just two birch trees, which that was on the plan. And then in that planting bed, if you're looking at the building, you have the walkway, and on the left side of the walkway, there's only two birch trees. And then it seems, like I didn't have the plan when I was there, so I wasn't quite sure what the small plants were. But when I looked at the plan, they were supposed to be five-gallon lavender. And I, if you recall, I said that they probably have a very hard time finding five-gallon lavender. And the plants that are in there are not five-gallon lavender. But I was thinking if they, and I don't think any of the ornamental grass had been planted either, but I sort of was thinking that before it gets planted, would the applicant be willing to work with the homeowner across the street? Because the lights from the cars that are parked in the parking lot are shining right over into their windows. So I'm imagining during, from, you know, October all the way through April, when the leaves haven't fully leafed out, the, the lights from the parking lot are shining straight over. So I was kind of wondering before, if they got planted, could other plants be put in or substituted? You know, instead of some ornamental grass, instead of the lavender, I feel like maybe some bigger limelight hydrangeas or some bigger double-file viburnums. They're fast-growing. They take up a lot of space. They provide a buffer. It would be a nice layering effect from the birch trees. Just from a design standpoint, I feel like there should be another birch tree. It should be a trio of birch trees and then maybe two firs, one on either side of the walkway. But it just needs to be planted more. It's very underplanted.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I have the landscape plan here. I'm looking at it. I haven't gone over and compared it to what's done. I suspect not everything's done. I didn't think the grasses had been planted. Honestly, there are all kinds of variations. There have been changes to this landscaping plan. The reason for this request tonight is to get those evergreens in. They grow fully. They will block the view. And then other plantings may need to be added, or maybe the ones that are there are going to get bigger. If the grasses haven't been planted, I can tell you, they get enormous if they have enough space. I have them in the tree lawn in front of my house, and I keep having to cut the back with the edge trimmer. But I mean, they're amazing for fill, I mean, I know you know more about landscaping than I do, but they do fill in well. It's just that I don't see them, and I don't know if they've been planted. I'll find out where, what the status of the current planting is. If the board is willing to approve planting these evergreens tonight, that would be really helpful, because they should get in, you know, towards the fall. And they will, they will block a lot of what the light, the, the concern about light is, although keeping in mind that the, this is a preschool daycare center, it closes at 6:00 p.m. at night. It's not open at night. It's not open on the weekends. It's not going to be shining lights all evening long into the neighbors' houses. But there should be screening, of course, and, and to the extent that the lights can be screened, that would be excellent. Certainly, when you look at the landscaping plan, it looks nice and full, but I remember there were evergreens in a straight row across the front of this building in the original landscaping plan, and that was changed because people wanted more variety. So it's really very difficult. You keep going back and forth and trying to, I think that now is the time to really look at what it's like. So I take your comments very much to heart. I understand now that you're looking at it, there's the completed building, there are the plants that are in now. And knowing about landscaping, Maggie, you have a sense for whether those plants are going to get big enough. So I will certainly convey all of those comments and, and ideas back to the owners. They're certainly struggling hard just to get to the point where they can open. And they will have, I think fall will be a good time for some of these things. Spring will be a better time for others. But I do want to, I'd really like to get the evergreen approval, because I think that that does address in part what you're talking about, and that this is a specific request from those two neighbors directly across the street, after they walked the front and talked about what could be done. They would have liked a fence. You know, a fence would block it entirely. But I know those trees will block it if they, as long as they grow well. And if they don't grow well, they're going to have to be replanted. So that's, I don't have an answer other than that.
I think Meredith and I are the only two on the board who were on the board at the time that this site plan approval was granted. And, you know, the landscape plan, I had said, I really would rather have a landscape architect prepare than a civil engineer. And I actually think we should change our rules and regs to make that a requirement, because I also went by the property and I thought, that landscape plan looked full. It looks completely empty. It looked like small little things kind of plopped there. It has no cohesion to it. And, and it's really disappointing, because a site plan approval for a Dover use, we have very little that we can review, and the landscape plan is one of them. And the neighbors were concerned about what they were going to be seeing. And what they're seeing, I would be disappointed if I saw it too. And so I actually find it pretty disappointing that the owner was wanting to swap three trees instead of adding some. If they're concerned with, as they said during the application, during the hearing, was working with the neighbors, then I would think they'd want to get this landscape correct and right and, and not come back and ask us to shift some from one part of the property to another. So that's disappointing to me. And whether, and again, like Maggie, I didn't have a plan with me when I went by. But if they haven't completed the installation of everything, I would like to encourage them to rethink it. Because if they're not going to do plantings until the fall, they do have an opportunity to rethink the plan. And that would be acting in good faith with both the board and with the neighbors to come up with the kind of screening that we all thought that this would provide.
I don't disagree with any of that. It's just a matter of time in getting everything done. I think that landscaping is something that also can, can evolve over time. And I think that it should. So I, you know, as far as your comment about moving the trees, all I can say is, when we agreed to put those three trees in the back, we said, there's really no purpose to putting those three trees there. They're nice, but there might be a better place. And if there is, is it possible that they could be moved? And the board seemed demented to that. So I don't think it's out of, I don't think it's improper to come back to the board at this point and say, no, let's, we shouldn't do those three trees there. We should do them in front. And they should be evergreens. They may not be as ornamental or beautiful as some of the lovely hardwood trees that we talked about last year, but they do screen better, and that's really what we're looking for now. And then as far as the rest of it goes, yes, I agree with your comments, and I hope that there's going to be opportunity to perhaps change some of the landscaping if it's going to make it better.
Sounds like this is the opportunity.
Anyone else?
Right?
It does. I mean, to me, I might condition this approval on a revision to, at least con- It does, I mean, to me, I might condition this approval on a revision to, at least, first of all, what's a plan, submission of a plan, what has, of this plan has been installed and what has not yet been installed, so we have a record of it. And then work with us on changes to what hasn't been planted.
And just so long as we understand that the neighbor is, in the back, is okay with those three trees not being planted there, to Sean's point. Are they here to speak about that?
No, I don't see them. At least on the call. I don't think that a butter attended any of our other public hearings either, so may not be aware.
Yeah, I think they did, and they had asked for additional screening. And because of the size of these, as Marion said, the size of these storm retention systems and the proximity to the property line, there's not adequate space to put any.
Right, oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about a different a butter than, I apologize, yes.
That's correct, the rear of butter. That's what I was talking about. There's been, considered, well, there has been a lot of discussion. And there still is future opportunity, but the land, the land ownership has to be resolved, unfortunately.
Yeah. Are the Atwoods aware that these trees would be removed?
All I know is that the Atwoods want a trees to be planted, you know, along their lot, you know, nearer to their lot line. They say, you know, they don't want a view either, although I don't think they have the lighting, they don't have any parking or anything that they're near. I don't know. I mean, I just think it's going to take a while to figure out how to do better screening. They already have some, but I think it's going to take a while to figure it out. And there may be other issues, you know, that work themselves out after the school is actually operating. And we see, for example, what the impact is of traffic going in and out, and the timing, and whether it has as much of a, you know, is as much of a concern as the front thing. Regardless of that, I think the evergreen should be put in the front. And, you know, because of the specificity of this landscaping plan, every time a change is made of any sort, we have to come back and ask you in good faith. So to add something, we have to ask you. And I guess if the neighbors didn't like it, it would be an issue. So in this case, they're asking for it.
I think, I think in the interest of protecting that condition that may resolve itself at the back, eventually they may be able to plant those trees if that can be worked out, possibly. And, you know, this request to plant the trees at the front, I would not be in favor of moving trees necessarily. If they want to add three trees at the front to satisfy the neighbor that would like those trees, I personally would support that, but I wouldn't want to forego the opportunity for those trees to go in the back for the purposes of screening at the back at some future date when that gets resolved. So I guess the way I look at it, it's adding three more trees to the property, not moving three trees. That I would support.
Well, what about the location of the trees to the right? See, you know, if they have to get planted, then there's not going to be anything else added to the back. Do you want to put that in abeyance and say that it's for the future because you can't do it yet, but that this should be done? I mean, I don't know how you would word it exactly, but, do you see what I'm saying?
No.
The trees in the right don't provide screening to the rear neighbor.
We wouldn't be, they wouldn't be required to put those three trees in the rear at this time until the resolution of the legal challenge between, because they, those three trees might be better suited somewhere else in that parcel in between. That's what you're saying, Marion, right?
That's right.
Because that's what the, that a butter had requested.
Right.
That's correct, yeah.
And-
So you're not, I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're not saying, oh, it's fine, you could just substitute these trees for those trees.
Correct.
But you're saying, yes, we'd like you to plant the front trees, if you give permission to that, and I think the white pine or whatever, there was a preference, the board should talk about that. In the back, the planting plan still calls for planting three trees in the back, to the rear of the property, as long as there's a way to do that, that doesn't interfere with the drainage. And the way to do it actually would be to offer to plant them or pay for the neighbor to plant them on their property, once it becomes their property.
Right.
The strip land is not their property right now, it's owned by somebody else.
Yep.
So, what do you take?
We also, we do have a hand, Jenny Russell has her hand up.
Okay.
So I thought, let's let Jenny speak too, because this is really affecting her property. Welcome, Jenny, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah.
And state your address for the record, please.
190 Central, right across the street. I'm here with my wife Helen, and we were the ones who met with Sonny a couple of weeks ago. And appreciate certainly his quick response to this and this application to you all. And I really appreciate Cheryl and Maggie's comments about sort of the comprehensive feel of this, because we definitely feel it's a disappointment. And it's so ironic, given that this follows your previous request, where a lot of the comments where this is in keeping with the style of Milton and the farm and sort of this country feel, and here we're presented with something that's absolutely not. So what we're sort of faced with is thinking about it, the property really fitting in with the residential and high standards of feel and look and style of landscaping around us. And we just want that, it's more than just the screening, yes, that's a priority for us, but it's also the feel of the whole property. So Cheryl and Maggie's thoughts about the more comprehensive sense of this is, for me, is right on. How do you do that? Yes, we want screening as soon as possible, but we want it sort of bigger and better as well, all around. And I'm sure the Atwoods would not be satisfied with the sort of switch and bait, sort of sense of taking the trees from one place and putting them in another, for sure. And Helen, do you want to add anything?
Well, I just wanted, Marion, your comment about the lights that the, the Goddard is only going to be open until 6:00. It isn't just the car lights, it's that there's this, you know, glare of 30 cars parked in the parking lot and the asphalt, and no trees. So that the screening of additional trees in that area between the parking lot and the sidewalk would really help mitigate that. It isn't just the lights.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Jenny or Helen, is that? So I think what I'm hearing the board say is that we absolutely would welcome the addition of the three trees. I don't know if the board has a preference, but the, you know, what it says here is arborvitae and/or white fir. I think, again, you know, long-term, having more of a layered effect, but perhaps the white firs may be a little less generic looking?
I don't have a, feel as if I'm qualified to select one or the other, so I'll look to perhaps Maggie to make a recommendation.
I like the idea of a white fir better than an arborvitae. I think it's fuller from top to bottom. I think, to Meredith's point, it's a little bit less common, it's more substantial, a little more natural looking than just putting down three arborvitae's. And the size. The key is the size, so making sure that it's a minimum of, it says eight to 10, 10's better.
10 foot.
At least, yeah, 10 foot.
So this is not, so this amendment would be to approve three additional trees. Marion, is that-
That's correct, but I'd just like you to have some language about delaying the planting of the three trees in the back to find the best location. Why don't we leave it that way?
Okay.
Which is kind of the way we left it after we discussed it last fall.
Right, right. So would someone like to make that motion?
And just to clarify, they don't need permission, do they, to add more? I mean, this landscape plan is just a minimum, correct? Can they add more if-
We'd have to look at the language of the approval.
Yeah.
And don't recall.
I mean, that's a good point. The land, but the approval is tied to the plans, and one page of the plans is the landscaping page. And that specifically names every plant and every shrub and every tree, except perhaps for, you know, flowers that might be planted around them. And so it's really just a sort of a cautionary tale for the future, I guess, and I'm not sure how, but there's probably a way to do this so that the purpose of the landscaping can be expressed by the board in their decision, and the plan can be shown as substantially the same or something like that. But that isn't the way this one was written. And I have no doubt if we came back and said, we want to add more plantings all over the place, that this board would probably endorse that heartily, so it's not something that's going to be a big difficulty. Right in front of the school, I think that's something the board did need to look at and agree to, because originally, the board didn't want all evergreens in front. But now I can see why it's important to try to do that.
Like, and I understand from the applicant's cost, so I noticed that there was not any plantings done up against the foundation. So I would be inclined, if cost is an issue, the applicant maybe should, could forego the planting up against the foundation and put that out towards the street for the benefit of the neighbors and the town as a whole. Because the neighbor, the neighbors in the town, you don't see the planting up against the building.
You mean the boxwoods that are, that have, things like that?
The lavender and the-
Grasses.
Grasses and-
Okay.
Well, I think we want to see both, Maggie.
Yeah.
Would want to, you know.
Yeah, but as a first-
I don't want to cut, yeah, anything. I think we need, it all needs to go in.
Be done.
But Maggie, I did, the owner of this property does know who you are now, because you were there for a site walk, and it would be helpful to be able to consult with you. And I, he's just been very busy. But I will bring some questions back from him, or maybe he'll visit you at their nursery. So thank you very much for your comments and suggestions.
So is it your opinion that we need to, I mean, this application is for, to amend it, to allow for the moving of those, since we're not approving that, do we really, do we just say no to that request and we're done? Because otherwise, adding, every time you add something, you want to come back. I guess, well, we should look at the language of the permit to confirm really the action, but-
You've taken further votes since the original landscaping plan was approved. The most recent one was last fall in September, and that's when, I think that's when you, they found out that one tree in front was dead, and that they had to remove one tree in back. That was the occasion for adding trees. So one tree was add, new tree was added in front, and three new trees were added in back, and that was in the right back location that I'm talking about. So now, I, you know, it would be nice if the board would take a vote saying that they endorse or approve the idea of planting three additional evergreens, and that you are asking that they be white fir, not arborvitae. And that you, if you have a comment, if you're willing to make a comment at a board meeting that's in the minutes, that the planting of the three trees in the back does not have to occur immediately and should await until the better location can be determined for those trees, and even the type of trees, but let's just say for those trees, because that's how we talked about it last fall. That's probably why they haven't been planted yet. I know it's not really a motion, the amendment might be to approve adding the three evergreens, though, because they're not on the planting plan. I think, it's very minor, but I think it's a minor amendment, you need to approve it.
But we don't have a location on the plan.
Say that again, Cheryl?
We don't have a proposed location on a plan. So we're-
Between the driveways to be determined, it has to be determined by an arborist, because they have to figure out where it can best-
In conjunction with the neighbors.
Well, it's, Jenny's here, and it's being discussed with the neighbors, but the actual location, I mean, the trees, they've got to be planted where they're not going to die. And I can't tell looking at the plans, I'd have to go back, but I know what you're talking about in terms of it looking very open in front. So evenly spaced, close together, that's the type of decision you have to make about what, you need to leave enough space for these evergreens to grow. They're going to be thick.
How about they stake where they're going to go?
If they tend to be tall to begin with, they're pretty big, but-
How about we require that they be staked, and that the board be notified, and we can go by, probably particularly Maggie, go by and take a look at the proposed locations.
In like a finite amount of time, like seven days or something, or?
I mean, I'm perfectly fine to defer that to Maggie, so to put our, that authority to Maggie to approve the locations in the field, if she's willing to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
That would be great.
That way, we wouldn't need to have it on the plan, submit it into a plan.
But your vote should say white, white fir, and if you feel the minimum height for the new trees should be 10 feet or nine feet, whatever, that should be in your vote. I need to have a record of that.
All right, so Meredith, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, yes, please.
So what was the, it's the white?
Adding three white-
Three white fir.
Fir. Fir, 10 feet.
10 feet.
10 feet minimum.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the site plan approval of the Goddard School at 193 Central Street to add three white fir, 10 feet in height minimum, to the front planting bed between the parking lot and central lav, in locations to be staked and approved by the planning board by member Oldfield.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Nice job.
Good.
Can I just ask you one question? Once there's, locations are staked, we don't have to wait for another planning board meeting to plant the trees, do we? I mean, I'm not, I don't know how fast it'll happen, but-
No, I think you just need to let Tim know, so he can let Maggie know when they're ready, they're ready for her to come out.
Well, I was thinking maybe Maggie would consult with him about where they should go first, but, well, yes, I will make that, I facilitate. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Marion.
Thank you, Marion.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay. Tim, this next item, discussion of proposed changes to the new fire headquarters site plan, do you want to tee this up?
Meredith, can we move to the MBTA communities and come back to the fire station?
Sure.
Yeah, one moment, please. Brian, are you just waiting so you can take your rendering? Oh, come on over, come on over. No, please, come and take it. No, no, that's okay.
Sorry.
Unless you want to stay for another hour and a half.
I know.
Yeah.
Good catch.
I thought you found it riveting and wanted to stay and listen to more.
Great. Yes, Cheryl, I'm absolutely fine. Is the rest of the board fine with moving to the MBTA communities next?
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Meredith.
Yes. Is that an agreement? Did everybody think that's okay? All right, I'm assuming so. Okay, Tim, if you would like to start us off on your presentation of our new districts.
Okay, thank you. So the good news is we have two options here and potentially more options, but I think between what we asked MAPC to take a look at and between what UTIL has been working with, we actually have two, I think, distinctive pathways for compliant districts. There's, if we were to go in either of these directions, there's some tweaking that needs to be done. I think that there are sort of arguments for perhaps combining these two strategies. But I'm going to walk through MAPC's memo first and, and just so everyone kind of remembers, we had asked MAPC to study basically all of the, what I would call large parcel kind of option. Well, not all of them, but, but a couple of the larger parcel options that we discussed and kind of agreed to take a look at. And that includes some of the larger parcels in the transit area, so around Milton Village, Central Ave, and then on the west side, the Unquity House parcel, the Granite Ave parcels, the State DPW yard, Legion Hall, and then also extending up to Two Granite Ave, the Brushhill Road parcels, which?
Tim, I'm sorry, can you just, can we get the map up while you're talking about these locations?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you need me to share that, Tim?
Uh, yeah, Josh, you might as well. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the actual MAPC report. I don't know if you want to put the mapper up or, or something else.
I think the report with the page that has the locations on it is helpful.
Sorry, I was, yeah, I think that's helpful to walk through the, for the audience that's, yeah, watching.
Figure two in the report, is that what you have there, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe you can point out that one says, "Tim, do you mind going back over the districts so Josh can point them out?"
Yeah, so the, 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 the two components of the transit area, so on, on the, on the east side, some large parcels around, nope, some large parcels around Milton Station and Central Ave. Those are the blue guys right there. On the west side, Unquity House on Curtis Road in yellow. We had asked them to look at the Granite Ave parcel, so the State DPW yard, the Legion Hall, and then Two Granite Ave, the office building over there. We also then looked at sites on Brushhill Road, so effectively the two large Fuller Village sites and then the Brushhill Rehabilitation Center. And then finally, some sites on, excuse me, Randolph Ave, so the, the A Thomas and Sons Landscape Business combined with the Animal Rescue League land behind that, kind of off of Chickatotawat Road. Again, the principle here being larger, non-residential or existing multifamily parcels. You know, we could conceivably draw arbitrary lines around any number of geographies in town, but I think having a kind of unifying kind of theme of, you know, these are places where it would be appropriate for some, some larger scale potential housing development. So we asked them to, to run these through the compliance model and, and the parameters that I gave to MAPC attempted to mirror as closely as possible what is existing in the area. And so the, the example that I'll give, and Josh, if you can kind of shoot through to some of the larger, kind of closer in maps, I think starting on page eight with District One. So this is, um, this is an area, so around Milton Village, Central Ave. So looking at the existing multifamily in the area, 131 Elliott Street is approximately an acre parcel. There are 38 units in that building. So what we basically said was, okay, if, if 38 units per acre is a tolerable, you know, existing condition, let's set a parameter for 40 units per acre, a nice kind of round number, so not, not very much larger than 131 Elliott Street, and sort of set that as a sort of, a maximum density on, on some of these larger parcels. So just to sort of ID, we've got 88 Wharf, Two Adam Street, the extra space building, One Elliott, 36 Elliott, 50 Elliott, the Steel and Rye Building, the Auto Body Shop and the Dry Cleaner, 131 Elliott, and then the block of buildings with Stevie's and Matty's and then kind of folding in 36 Central into that. And I think it's under Elliott Street there, but I do think we also folded in the buildings where Craft and Crew and the plate used to be. And so, you know, very, very sort of basic parameters that we gave to MAPC, which is basically, you know, density and some, some, you know, some, some basic, you know, floor area ratio. I don't know if it's on this, the chart, but we did have parameters on another chart. But just so you can see that, you know, out of these blue parcels, there's a potential for 597 multifamily units. And then, does this show what the overall density is? There's a chart coming up that, that'll show the overall density. But, but so, you know, this is, this is what we gave them for District One. If you can move on to District Two. And I, I want to just kind of run through these and then there's a kind of a sum up table at the end that kind of shows our compliance metrics. This is Unquity House. We folded in some surrounding parcels just to get to the five acre minimum land area for a sub-district. It's very similar parameters at, at 40 units an acre. This, this gets you to 161 potential multifamily units. And really, it, because it's only really dealing with the one parcel, all the other parcels would be, would be unbuildable under, under these parameters. We go on to District Three.
So, Tim, that, can you just, I think it's worth highlighting that what you mean by the other parcels are not buildable? And, and I think there were a couple in District One too. And just for people who might want to understand what that is, what that means.
So, so basically, and, and it's actually less of, of, of a deal in, in District One, but especially in, in District Two where, where Unquity House is. And I'm going to go, I'm going to separately bring up the, the charts in, in my document just so I can see. So for District Two, for instance, which is, which is Unquity House, so we set a minimum lot size at 21,780 feet, which is a half an acre, which means you could conceivably on that site, I, I, I think that site is about four acres. So you could conceivably have, you know, four different sites on that, but it's all under common ownership and, and you can kind of, the reason why we set that half acre kind of parameter is to create a, rather than like setting like a minimum lot size and saying like you can put X number of units on a lot and here's your minimum lot size, what we did in these cases is set a minimum lot size and then create a spectrum. So if you've got a half an acre, you can do, you know, at 40 units an acre, you can do 20 units. If you've got a full acre, you can do 40 units. If you've got two acres, you can do 80 units. So to create that spectrum so that there's no cap, but also it's kind of very strictly tied to, you know, to the geography. So at a half acre minimum lot size, these houses sort of right on Blue Hills Parkway and Curtis Road, none of them are buildable under these, under these circumstances because none of those are half acre sites. Now conceivably, if someone wanted to come in and buy six houses in Milton and put up 20 units, you know, you could do that. I don't think it would make cost effective sense. But, so, so really in this district, really all we're talking about is a buildable lot is, is the Unquity House lot. And, and there are a handful of, a handful of parcels in the first transit area district where that's also the case. And really what, what a lot of this comes down to is two factors. Contiguity, you want the district to be contiguous, so they've got to be connected parcels. And then that minimum size of five acres is the minimum for, for a sub-district. And so that's why when we get to Granite Ave, you'll see it in even more stark relief because there's another, there's another aspect here. If we can go down to, to District Three, Josh, just so I can, and, and here's, here's where we're kind of talking about the first, what I'll call wrinkle that we may want to deal with. And, and so when I say that we've got two options, you know, we could conceivably take what MAPC has and run with it. I don't think we want to run with it. And you'll see the same thing for the UTIL work as well. Technically, it's compliant, but I think we want to do some molding and some tweaking. And I think here is where you see one of those situations where, you know, the likelihood of Fuller Village being redeveloped at this point, I think is very slim. These are relatively new developments. I, I don't think it makes sense to demolish new housing and put up slightly newer housing, but, you know, that's kind of a, a calculation. But if you look at the parameters that we give, multifamily unit capacity on these parcels is 1,324 units. I saw that, my eyes kind of popped. So that's something where, you know, in some of the other districts, those loose parameters and those very limited parameters kind of, you know, worked and, and made sense and yielded something that maybe, you know, was kind of, okay, maybe this is reasonable. 1,300 units down here is, is crazy, all right? And so that's a situation where if we wanted to pursue using this sub-district, we would definitely want to take a closer look at, at those parameters and get to something where the unit capacity that we're dealing with is, is not 1,300 units, but rather, you know, something, something more reasonable. It's, it's a big, it's a big area down there. You know, it's, this, this map is zoomed in in a way, but it's, you know, it's huge. So, but the, the dimensional parameters down there are, you know, minimum lot size of 217,800 square feet. So we set, we set a pretty, a pretty big, you know, minimum lot size, but again, 20 units per acre starts to add up. And so, you know, that's something where, you know, we'd want to, we'd want to take a look down there and, and tweak it. We don't need 1,300 units down there, we just don't. So Josh, if you can move on to District Four?
Tim, I did have one question on that. Sorry, the Brushhill?
Yeah.
Aren't there a lot of wetlands behind Fuller Village?
Yeah.
So those would not be able to, would not be able to be built on. So they would actually have them, they could put that number of units, but in a more concentrated area on that site?
Correct. Right. And so, you know, this is something where again, with, with, when, when you put, you know, a very limited set of dimensional parameters into this model, it'll spit out some, some eye popping numbers. And then once you start going to, you know, we've got a five story building height, maybe you do a four story building height and now that sort of capacity number goes down. You know, maybe you set in some, some setback requirements that, you know, start to shrink that footprint even more. This one, you know, may or may not be taking into account sort of the, the upland versus wetland area here. But, but that's another thing where, you know, I, I think, and, and again, this is why, you know, when, when you talk about zoning versus actually producing units, if there was going to be a redevelopment here, it would probably be on a similar footprint to the existing buildings, which are already taking into account the wetlands and all of those things. And, and again, you know, the, the time and expense of, you know, of, of actually doing that kind of makes it probably not worthwhile. But again, you know, we want to be very cognizant of if we're going to pass zoning, it's got to be something that we can live with. And, and I, I don't, I, I think I can speak for many Miltonians where, where 1,300 units down here is, is just not appropriate. So, so that's something where we'd want to tweak some of those numbers. And again, you know, we're talking about Fuller Village because those are the two biggest parcels. You know, 1,200 Brushhill Road, the Brushhill Rehabilitation Facility is also included there. Again, that's a going concern, that's a, an existing business. You know, I, I don't think that it's necessarily something that would be redeveloped, but as far as I, that, that used to be housing, right? That was a seminary back in the day, right? So that, I mean, that, that building is, you know, could conceivably be housing again at some point in the future if they wanted to redevelop. But, but again, this is an area where, you know, you've got an existing building and it's an existing business and, you know. So we, we need to, we need to grab density and this has been kind of like the theme of these parcels is like boosting our overall density number. We don't need more units because we've got, under these, under these parameters, we've got something like beyond what we need. So Josh, if you can move to District Four. This is off of Randolph Ave. Similar parameters to Brushhill Road, 20 units per acre. I think we set a minimum lot size of 130,680, which is just kind of pegs to what the existing parcelization looks like. Two and a half story building height, you know, one space per dwelling unit, 20 units per acre. That gets you on this site to 280 potential units. These two sub-districts, three and four, are, are ones where, you know, we want to be extra cognizant of, I think one of the issues we had with the 40B projects is, you know, you're, you're building huge multifamily buildings in the middle of the woods and so everyone needs a car because, you know, the two 40 bus goes up Route 28, but you're sort of far on the outskirts of town and, you know, we, we don't want to be building too much auto oriented development because all that does is exacerbate our traffic issues and, and whatever. And so this is something where splitting the sort of, the, splitting the baby between, okay, we need to crank up our density numbers for all of the districts as a whole versus, you know, do we really want to be building a ton of multifamily housing in these sort of outskirts kind of areas of town? You know, we may want to kind of adjust those parameters to kind of, you know, limit the amount of housing that goes here, but still kind of help us in, in some of the other metrics where we need help. And Josh, if you can move on to District Five? So this is the Granite Ave District. And, and this is sort of the, the funny one because, you know, we had originally tested the, the Legion Hall site and the, the State DPW yard. We wanted to fold into Granite Ave again as a relatively large building on a largish, you know, site. You know, not, not the oldest building in town, but also not the newest, you know, office, you know, especially suburban office. The whole office market is, is kind of, you know, fundamentally different than it was even a few years ago. So, you know, that's a potential redevelopment site there. One thing you'll notice, the size and the kind of composition of this district includes a significant amount of salt marsh. And, and I laugh because, you know, I, I don't want people to look at this map and say like, oh my goodness, we're going to redevelop the salt marsh. This is what the state guidelines consider to be excluded land. It is wetland. It is owned by the state and the state has never had any intention of redeveloping it. So this is land that you're allowed to include it in a district for the purposes of contiguity. So including that salt marsh area allows us to connect the State DPW yard to Two Granite Ave, but it's unbuildable. It's excluded and so it doesn't count towards our land area, area denominator. So really it's kind of just like ghost land that just allows us to have a contiguous district, which is good. It's good that the state allows you to do that. And so between these three sites, there's a potential for 483 multifamily units. We had, we had cranked up the parameters a little bit more compared to some of the other ones. No minimum lot size, six story building height, 1.5 floor area ratio. You know, it's, again, outskirts of town, you know, especially Two Granite Ave is, is really kind of a standalone parcel. So we thought if there's going to be, you know, significant height, significant density in any of these districts, these were probably the more appropriate places. in any of these districts, these were probably the more appropriate places, you know, to do it. So that's kind of what the model spit out for these districts. Again, technically, all kind of get us to our compliance goals here. And this is the chart that shows that. So our unit capacity figure is 2,461. So we get 2,800-plus units out of these zoning districts. So we get past that metric. 50-acre minimum size, that's just straight up out of the guidelines. This is obviously much bigger than 50 acres, so we hit that metric. And then the overall density of these five districts is almost 24 units an acre. And so very comfortably within those, you know, high-level metrics of compliance. Josh, if you can move on to the next chart because this is one where I actually started to have some questions. And maybe it's not... Maybe I said the next chart, but maybe I'm thinking of something else. There's a couple... Yeah, we got to go back to the beginning. So there's a couple other requirements that I actually have some... And Josh, it's Page 4 with those requirement checks. So these are additional requirements that are in the guidelines. So I mentioned before, we need to get to five acres for every sub-district. So each non-contiguous area must be five acres, all right? So we've got that. All of our sub-districts are at least five acres. At least half the district land area is contiguous, right? And so what this means is you can have half of your area in five-acre minimum sub-districts kind of placed around wherever, but the other half needs to be one big district. We passed this requirement because of the Granite Avenue sub-district, which included all of that salt marsh area. You know, I talked to our project manager at MAPC. We kind of took a look at what the model was spitting out, and this is what it said. It seems a little kind of funky to me. So this is something I'm going to double-check this with the state to make sure that this is in fact something that gets us to 50% of our sub-districts kind of being contiguous. The reason I say it sounds kind of funky is because all of that salt marsh area is otherwise excluded, so it doesn't count towards our density, but then would count towards the overall area of our district. It just didn't jive with me. So I'm going to double-check on that because we don't want to be handing in something and then later on, they tell us that it's no good. Number three is the minimum land area, again, much greater than 50 acres. And then the other one is how much of your districts are... So half of... And we've talked about this, half of everything needs to be in the transit area, and then the other half of everything can be elsewhere. And so this overlaps with those requirements on 50% has to be contiguous. So this is another one where that Granite Ave district gets us to 50% of the area being within the transit area, 50% of the units being within the transit area. And again, this is just something I wanted to double-check with the state on, especially as it related to, you know, that excluded land in the salt marsh. The other thing that actually had kind of slipped under my radar until we started looking at 2 Granite Ave, 2 Granite Ave is actually in the transit area. It's within the catchment area for Cedar Grove. It's 2 and 1/2 mile of Cedar Grove Station. You just walk over the bridge and a couple blocks and you're there, which was wild to me. But it's good because we need as much, you know, as much as we can do in terms of density and units in the transit area there, the less we need to do in some of the sort of single-family districts. So all of that, saying, Josh, you can scroll down just a little bit. Actually, no. Go towards the end, again, to those compliance metrics. You missed it. There you go. So if we were to sort of hand into the state, we'd have to write actual sort of zoning language, but if we were to hand them these districts, we would be compliant, right? The questions that I have, in addition to some of those questions I had about, you know, does that salt marsh area count in terms of contiguity, in terms of overall area? But the other kind of, I think, more fundamental question that we want to ask is, do we want all of those units in Brush Hill Road and Randolph Ave? That's a lot of units in areas that are not really transit or amenity-rich. They're going to have to be heavily auto-oriented. And quite frankly, you know, I think there's a very good argument to be made to sort of spread around the impacts of this zoning, but the pendulum is now in another direction, you know, especially when you look at that Brush Hill Road district. So I think what we need to look at is if you right-size that Brush Hill Road district, it probably takes you under your unit capacity number. Because we're only at 2,845, we need to be at 2,461. So if you say, cut that Brush Hill Road district even in half, and I think it probably needs to be cut in more than half, now you're under your requirements for unit capacity, and now you have to start adding units somewhere else. And so I think the sort of... The necessary tweaks to each of these districts is going to probably take us slightly out of compliance, which is going to necessitate either tweaking them in a different direction or adding in some of the districts that UTIL has looked at. And I can either stop here for questions or comments, or we can move into the UTIL work and kind of see how that interfaces with what we just saw.
How does... Excuse me.
I think going into UTIL's next makes sense.
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Okay, great. So UTIL has been working, and if you remember, we had asked them to do a first run at testing the entire transit area, half-mile around the stations, you know, between Milton Village and Unquity House. And so the sort of the side mission that we gave to MAPC was to look at some of these other districts. We wanted UTIL to continue to refine the transit area to see, you know, what is a more appropriate kind of configuration of districts that could get us to compliance in the transit area. And just to remind folks that if you zone this entire area at what we feel are appropriate densities, you hit your overall unit capacity number, you exceed it by thousands of units, which is not necessarily something we're interested in doing. Your district size is there, the overall density is not there. And so what we had asked UTIL to do is, is it possible to get to an overall district density of 15 units per acre here? And so this is kind of everything. And what they... The exercise that they did was, and you may remember in previous presentations where I basically said, you know, here are units that are not working for us. Either because they're too small and don't give us any units because they're so small that they're beyond the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, or they're so big that the density that we want these parcels to be at is not giving us enough units. So I mean, like, it's a bad example, but, you know, Hutchinson Field, just because it's big and you can see it, you know? Pretend that Hutchinson Field was a house lot. That only gives us four units at a kind of a density of four units per lot, even though it's a multiple-acre sort of site. So what UTIL did was basically said, here are the really small parcels, here are the really big parcels. You may want to consider just not zoning these areas at all to kind of reconfigure your overall density number, so that you're taking away land that is not productive. So basically reducing your denominator of land area in that sort of gross density calculation. So Josh, if you can move on to the next one? So this is basically the black outline kind of ghost parcels are, you know, what if we remove these entirely from consideration? What that does is, again, these tiny parcels are 100% reducing our denominator because we're taking land area away. We're not losing any units because there were never any units there in the first place. And then these bigger parcels, we're taking away, and we're losing a handful of units, but we're also losing a lot of land area out of that gross density calculation. Okay? So this just shows what will be sort of taken out in a way that you can kind of take away big chunks of these districts, and what remains is kind of productive and you can actually sort of, you know, start to use it. So Josh, if you can move on to the next one? So what they did next is, so those ghost parcels are now gone, and then they divided the transit area into these sort of seven sub-areas that, you know, either by virtue of geography or kind of overall parcel size or, you know, kind of work as their own kind of distinctive kind of areas. So Josh, if you can keep moving down? This now just kind of labels, so they're taking out the areas that MAPC is going to be studying, so this is just a diagram that shows that. And so here's what they did for dimensional parameters in these areas. And so for 1 through 5, and they're kind of color-coded, you know, according to those big numbers up there, 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size, three stories max, 15 feet in the front, 10 feet on the sides, 30 feet in the rear setbacks. And then this max dwelling units per acre, again, similar to what we talked about with some of the, excuse me, MAPC sub-districts, setting up that spectrum of, rather than saying three units on a lot for a 5,000-square-foot lot, basically saying, you know, for every 5,000 square feet that you have... Well, no, no, no. This is actually, now that I'm talking through this, this is a question that I have for UTIL, and it's unfortunate that we have this meeting tonight and then I'm talking to UTIL in a couple hours, 12 to be exact, because I actually have a question for them. Because at the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, you actually can't get to 20 units an acre. I have some math on a post-it note on my desk right now. Basically, I... We need to think about what actually the minimum lot size is going to be because... I'm losing my train of thought. Josh, we talked about this. What was the...
I thought it was 7,500 for these guys.
Uh, no. So this is the existing zoning is 7,500 square feet. So at 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size, there are... There are eight 5,000-square-foot lots in an acre, right? And at three units per lot, which is three units per lot is the definition of multifamily, right? It's got to be three units or more.
That's what gets 20.
So if you add a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, you would have eight lots in an acre. Three units per lot is actually 24 units per acre, right? So that minimum lot size actually, I think, needs to go up in order to get to that max dwelling units per acre of 20. Do you understand what I mean?
Tim, just for clarity, that max dwelling units per acre is meant as a cap to avoid overdevelopment, right? That's not saying what the expected density would be, but as a, well, it could be 24, but we're setting the zoning cap at 20 so that it is less dense while still within the guidelines, just for clarity for folks.
Well, I mean, but still, like, I kind of... And maybe my brain is mush, and I just need them to hold my hand and walk through this. But I still think if you were to put three units on a 5,000-square-foot lot, that's 24 units an acre. Am I wrong?
You're right. Yes, correct.
So like, you've got... They've got... We've got to figure out a way to split the difference between three units is the minimum number of units to count as multifamily, and then how do you set... Because the point of all of this is, in order to get to that 15-unit-per-acre overall density, these are the parameters that you need to do that with. This is more, I think, relevant for some of the larger parcels. And again, to Josh's point, setting that cap to prevent the overall, the sort of overdevelopment. There are no parcels in this setup that are... There's very few, I think, acre parcels here. And so there's no possibility of there being, you know, a 50-unit apartment building in any of these, under these kind of parameters. All that being said, there are some larger parcels here, right? And so in order to sort of, if you set that spectrum of 20 units per acre, there is the possibility under this scheme that some of these parcels in 6 and 7 may start to see some larger buildings, right? And so, again, when I said earlier that we have two options, that's the good news. The bad news is that neither of them are actually, I think, 100% great options. Because I don't think that... And, you know, people can correct me, but I don't think that we want to have 20 units per acre, 20-unit apartment buildings in the 6 and 7 areas. But that's what you need in order to get to the overall density that's needed if this is going to be your sub-districts, right?
But, Tim, they excluded... Well, let's... We'd have to go to one of your charts, which show the next... One of the further pages, right? They excluded the, what MAPC called District 1, which is the, I would call the ends of the district.
Right.
So what... We couldn't...
Right.
...go back into a number if we said that we wanted to include MAPC's District 1, MAPC's District 5, which is the Granite Ave. So those... That yield, District 1 for MAPC was 597, and District 5 was 483. So that's over 1,000 units right there, right? So does that give us half of the units outside of... That can be outside the district?
Wouldn't those be in the district? Yeah. Are you still talking about like the Central Ave and then the Unquity House units?
Yeah. So if you go to... If you go to their third to last page... Oh, Page 18. Wait. Yeah, Page 18. They're arriving at a large number of units in order to get to that density level of 15.8 per acre, right?
Right.
Whereas if you looked at the MAPC, you don't have anything... Everything in... So you end up needing to sort of analyze this sort of lesser-density district and merge it with the larger-density district, right?
Yeah.
But they've done it a little bit because they've included Granite Ave, but they've got it modeled at 700 units, whereas MAPC had it modeled at 483. So it's like, what... It seems to me what we need to do is have them model it with actually what MAPC came up with for the Granite Ave sub-district.
Yeah.
And include District 1 from MAPC.
Yeah. As soon as the MAPC work came in, we handed it off to UTIL because we want them to stitch it all together so that it's kind of a cohesive thing. But I... So I guess, you know, the question that I have is, and it kind of... It starts at the kind of the big picture. and it kind of, it starts at the kind of the big picture and then kind of moves into kind of more detailed, kind of specific questions is... And a lot of it has to do with sort of the timeline. And I want to be able to give these folks kind of direction kind of between meetings is, do we want to keep all of these sub districts?
So Tim, if I'm going back to what my train of thought was, if MAPC's District One's 597 units and District Five is 483, at 1,080 units, can we get transit districts one through five and six through seven combined to be somewhere around, the difference, 2,461 less the 1,080 is 1,381 as opposed to 3,500 units in those districts? So it might mean that you have less land area, less, and that's what I would want them to kind of advise us. So where they have seven districts?
Right.
And if we said, okay, we already have two other districts that are yielding us 1,080? I mean, this is not tweaking anything yet within those districts, for example. But, you know, to... You know, this idea of needing three units an acre minimum, does that mean that the density that they have to plug into the model has to be that maximum density of 20 or 24?
Right, so, so I think, I think... Adding in the, the sort of the larger parcels in the transit sub district kind of gets you more units and then, because remember, the overall density needs to be 15 units per acre. So any given sub district could be less than 15 units per acre, right? What we're looking at with UTL's work right now gets you to strictly the transit area plus Granite Ave at, you know, the overall density of whatever it gets to. Is it 15 something?
So I guess what I'd be interested in UTL looking at is what land area would allow us to zone for 1,381 units within that corridor of zones one through seven? And I'm assuming it would be a lot less land area than that. Does that make sense to you?
No, it does. And I think, I think between the two sets of sub districts that both of our consultants have come up with, we have a lot of flexibility in unit capacity. And I think we've got a lot of flexibility in overall density. Because if you remember, the MAPC districts, the overall density in those districts is like 24 units per acre, right? So there's a lot of room to either trim those districts or if we wanted to include the sort of, the, you know, transit sub districts one through seven, reducing the density of those in a way so that you don't necessarily have to do 20 units per acre. You could do something, you know, much less that's still kind of, you know, counts as multifamily. You also may not need to include 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Maybe you only need to do 1, 2, 3. You know, so it's, I think in, as an individual set of sub districts, I don't think either of these are ideal. But I think in combination, there's a lot of flexibility to start to dial back a lot of these numbers, you know, to get to something where we kind of hit a lot closer to 15 units per acre on the nose and 2,461 unit capacity on the nose. Because as it stands now, we're like way over on unit capacity and we don't need to be. And we're potentially way over on overall density and we don't need to be.
So Tim, I have just sort of a different suggestion, I guess. So I really do like what, everything that MAPC did. I think it does divide it between different parts of town as far as, you know, spreading out the, you know, impacts to different areas. The area that I do agree is the Fuller Village, the Brush Hill Road area. I think that's just way too many units there. Although I do, I'm pretty certain that Fuller Village is not going to, you know...
Yeah.
The incentive to tear down and rebuild Fuller Village, I just don't see that happening. But what I would almost like to see is that we reduce the density on, you know, on that site to, you know, to have some units there because the likelihood is that they won't, we've got a lot of units there and they likely won't demolish it. But possibly add an additional district. So take, you know, it's 1,200 units, maybe we reduce that, cut that in half. And then we look at, you know, I know we talked about that... And I, I'm forgetting the location, but off the Parkway? The Brownfield site? And I know it's shy of, you know, just shy of five acres. But if we could get permission to zone there, we could zone that as one of our districts because, and, you know, the upside to that is it is close to public transportation. And the incentive there, and that would be, you know, the least potential of destroying neighborhoods, I would just say. And altering, you know, definitely, you know, certain neighborhoods that could, that we could keep, you know, sort of the character, but puts, you know, put districts in where housing is likely to be built. So we're achieving both goals.
Yeah, I think, and especially like around that Brush Hill kind of district, you know... I, and this is where kind of it becomes, you know, considering principles beyond just what's in the guidelines or what's in the requirements is, you know, you probably don't actually need that district there. And you probably don't even need a new district off of Truman Parkway. Like, we can definitely between Granite Ave, the MAPC transit area sub districts and, you know, some combination of, you know, transit sub districts one through seven, you know, get to where we need to be in terms of our compliance. I think the virtue in those other sub districts is that sort of equity question of, you know, spreading this around, giving some level of, you know, density and unit capacity relief to the transit area by putting some of that stuff elsewhere. And so that becomes a little bit of a guiding principle of, you know, okay, do we need to, you know, where do we sort of adjust these dials to sort of get them to a place where they're not? Because what you don't want to do is add unit capacity for no reason. We don't need to do that. And sort of add districts that aren't going to be contributing to either the overall density or some sort of equity consideration. And so, you know, I think it's, we can see what we can do about drawing a district around, you know, the Paper Mill site.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we'll definitely want to look at it just in terms of, you know, just making sure that we're not detracting from the overall density figures that we need. Which I don't think, I don't think we will. I think, again, like I said, there's a lot of room for kind of, you know, adjusting those dials. I think a big part of it is kind of getting both of these sets of sub districts into one kind of package. UTL's working on that. And once that's in place, that's when you can start to just like very simply like, you know, reduce the density here, was it spit out? That becomes a really quick exercise. You know, once you've got your geography set, adjusting the parameters is very, very simple.
So Tim, can I come back to, what, I make a correction to what I said before? Because I'd like for you to talk to UTL about this tomorrow. So if you did MAPC's District One, so that's the 88 War, 131 Elliott, et cetera, at 597, currently there's 194 units there. And this district would allow the redevelopment of the Webb Mill building where we know that J.D. Wilde wants to do housing, well, mixed use. It would allow for the extra space storage. So there's capacity to add units there. District Two, which is where Unquity House is, was modeled at 161 units. And there's already 139 there at Unquity House. And District Five, we know there's no housing there because that's where the Granite Ave site. But those three, so the two ends of Elliott Street corridor, if you will, and Granite Ave, that's 1,241 units, which is basically half of the 2,461, right? So if we did say, okay, dial down Fuller Village, which by the way has 323 units over there, not counting the nursing home site. And that's on 60 acres, so it's like five units an acre already. But if you dialed that down and then you looked at some component of MAPC, or UTL's zones one through seven, right? So if you really pared down that one through seven to pick up some units that you might be losing over at Fuller, that seems to me a viable...
So the one concern, the one concern that I have is, and Josh, can you bring up slide five on the UTL slideshow? Just because this one, this one just kind of shows the whole transit area. So under the MAP, so if we do, if we do the Granite Ave sub district, what MBPC put in the model and what came out said that that geography got us half of our area being contiguous, which is a requirement. Like I said, I'm a little skeptical. I want confirmation from the state that that's actually the case because the vast majority of that sub district's area is actually excluded land. So if it does happen that, no, actually Granite Ave doesn't get you your half contiguous area, what we're going to need to do is, the only other, I think, viable opportunity to get a large enough contiguous district is to connect the Unquity House sub district to the Milton Village sub district via, you know, two, three, and four here on this map.
Yeah.
Which is, which is why, you know, you want to sort of keep in mind that, you know, if you do, because, I mean, my instinct all along has been that, you know, there's not a tremendous desire to put density in this area, just to put it very simply. It's an existing single-family neighborhood. It has the potential to be disruptive. If you can do it anywhere else, I think people would rather do it. We may be compelled to do some portion of this area, not because of, not for density reasons or even unit capacity reasons, but to get the sort of geography that we need. So that's one thing to kind of keep in mind. If we do need to do that, then, you know, that has implications for some of the other sub districts in terms of, you know, dialing down.
What if we modeled it two ways? Because maybe that's one of the things that we push back on is to say that if there was something to push back on besides that we're a rapid transit community? You know, maybe it's that contiguous piece because of the character of this.
Our transit area. Yeah, our transit area.
How small the area is, how close the stops are, as people have said. So that, that's, you know, being able to count that land at Granite Ave would be sort of a compensation for those characteristics, if you will. I mean, that could be...
I think that, I think that makes perfect sense. And this is one of those things where, you know, it's just a kind of artifact of the state, you know, having to craft guidelines that are going to fit 175 different communities. And I think this becomes the argument that like, you know, look, in order to get a contiguous district that meets our overall density numbers, we would be compelled to overshoot our unit capacity number by 2,000 units. And that's ridiculous.
Exactly.
So I want to get some clarity on that Granite Ave sub district question. If in fact that would count for us, then great. It gives us a lot more options. But then otherwise, I think, you know, we start to kind of think about, you know, there's, you know, we're putting a ton of potential units in the transit area. Like, there's no question that like we're approaching this in a serious and good faith way.
I think, but getting clarity, I think getting clarity is one thing. But if you go about getting the clarity by saying, this is what we'd like, we'd like to confirm that this is, can be what it is, rather than...
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, and we've got, we've got the compliance model that spat out that figure. So I mean, like, we've got something, it's, and this is the question I had when I talked to our MAPC project manager. I'm like, are these inputs that you guys put in? They're like, no, it's, you know, you do the dropdown menu, say Town of Milton, and it plugs in, you know, all these numbers and, you know, it counted for us. So it just, it looks kind of fishy to me, but it could be, you know, could be fine, so.
Well, Tim, back to your, back to your point about the guidelines and how difficult it is for them to craft guidelines for 175 communities. That's why guidelines are guidelines and they're not legally enforceable. So they are up for debate and challenge and flexibility. So I think just by the definition of it being a guideline, you know, you get as close as you possibly can, that fits our town, I think.
Yeah. Megan, I think you're absolutely right. And, you know, my, you know, part of me says that, you know, they're going to be very stingy with the relief that they give anybody, you know, again, because there's 12 rapid transit communities with a due date at the end of the year and then 100 and some odd, you know, communities with a due date the end of next year. And, you know, they may not want to be setting kind of precedence for themselves. But at the same time, I think, again, you know, if we follow all of their rules, you know, to the letter and wind up, you know, zoning for 4,000 units as opposed to our 2,461 target, I think that becomes a basis for like, you got to give us a break here somewhere. Because, you know...
That's the argument that I think that you could take to them now, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right. Like, we have evidence out of their own, you know, tool that says that this works. I'd like confirmation of it, but, you know, I'm not coming from a position of like, oh, I wonder. It's like, no, this did this. Is this right, you know? So I think, you know, we're at where I think I hoped we would be in terms of there are options, right? And we've got, you know, we've got room to work with. And I don't think we need to zone every single one of these sub districts to the density and the parameters that we've tested because the test is spitting out, you know, numbers that say, you know, you've got, you've got fat to trim, which I think is good.
So Tim, is there room to go more dense at Fuller Village and Bunny Thomas's site and Granite Ave?
Sure. Yes. I mean, so technically, yes.
So if we go denser on those, could it relieve the Elliott Street corridor? Drop that down to 10 units per acre, maybe? And still hit the average?
We already have it compliant without any of, if you look at MAPC's, it's compliant with only doing the very ends of Elliott Street and nothing else in between.
Yeah, so we may not, we may not need to touch the Elliott Street corridor. It's kind of where it's at. The only reason I bring it up is because if, if the Granite Ave district actually doesn't get us to our 50% of the areas contiguous kind of requirement, then we may need to touch Elliott Street. But I think in as minimal a way as we can just to strictly connect two geographies rather than actually, you know, get numbers out of either of them. I mean, to answer your question, like, there is room to increase the density. You can increase the height. I think you don't want to do a ton of that, though, just by virtue of the fact that both of those sites are, you know, as far away from downtown. of those sites are, you know, as far away from downtown and Milton as you can get. You know, on Randolph Ave, maybe you go south instead of north, you know, to get onto the highway, but still, you know, you're just putting more cars on the road and kind of exacerbating issues that, you know, we hear people complain about all the time.
And the 240 bus only runs now every 30 minutes
I mean, to take
Because ridership is down.
But the reality of it is, though, if you were simply trying to accomplish, you know, more housing, MAPC has a much better likelihood of making that happen. That is not likely to accomplish. It's too complicated. Too many properties have to be purchased and assembled to, you know, to be able to create something. The MAPC plan, you know, doesn't create as much complexity in order of, you know, development.
One thing I would say, though, if you think about the nursing home in Fuller Village, I don't know what capacity the nursing home has, but Fuller Village at 323, and MAPC right now has that at 1,324. And if the nursing home did get sold, because that might be one that would be more likely than Fuller Village, it's a pretty big, well, I don't know.
It's only about five acres, five or six acres there.
Okay. Then, you know, you're looking at Brushell Road and the Ponzi Valley Parkway in terms of roadways that are impacted. So in terms of ratcheting things up, I don't think you want to ratchet something so much in one area that if it actually did happen, that it would be pretty unbearable either. So, but
That's why I think, yeah, taking it down and, but adding another district to offset that, you know, to cut those numbers in half and find something else that's not putting more in the, you know.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, you know, again, between the two sets of sub-districts, we're way over unit capacity, so we've got a lot of fat to trim there. And, you know, conceivably, you know, way over on the overall density, you know, between 15 points, some fraction, you know, for UTIL sub-districts and 24 for MAPC sub-districts, you know, there is, there's flexibility there to dial down those numbers, you know, and I think, because I think ultimately, you know, what we're looking for is hitting the mark as close as we can, and having as little density in any given sub-district as possible in order to achieve the overall numbers. So there's a couple of questions that I think we need to get clarity on from the state, and then I think it becomes, you know, just an exercise in really pinning things down in terms of, you know.
So Tim, I was looking at the map, and Meredith's suggestion of the paper mill, and if you did something like you did over at Granite Ave, where you know it's not, it's land that's actually excluded, but could be contiguous, could you connect with Unquity House site along Brushell Road and Parkway?
Yeah, that's actually
I'm laughing because it's like, yeah, you can. I'm sure you can. It's kind of dopey to me, you know, it's like, oh, well, here's a zoning district, then it's all DCR land except for these two parcels. But you're, I think you're allowed to do it, so
So Tim, then that would put us, then that would put us over that five acres, if it's contiguous and connected.
Well, but, so, yeah, no, no, exactly. Right, exactly. So that gets you that, and it's, you know, there's two developable parcels in there. You can, you can cross the street, that's another thing. You've got all that spaghetti at sort of Blue Hills Parkway, Blue Hill Ave, Brushell Road, but I think, you know, that counts for continuity purposes.
I think the argument we make is, you know, this is the way it could work in Milton. And, you know, if you're trying to find a way that it can work in 175 towns,
Right.
Given our, given the trolley location and the Ponzi River, and the, you know, we have all of this wetlands and green and open space and DCR land and et cetera. So if you can't use it, you're really in a bind, right?
Right.
Right. So Tim, I think we should ask MAPC to run that, run that district, you know, run that as a model district to see how many units we could get there to offset Fuller Village, Brushell Road, I should say.
No, I think, I think that's, I think that's a fine idea. So all of this is to say, we'll have a little bit more information tomorrow. We've got our normal, regular meeting with UTIL. We can see how far they've advanced the ball. So there may be some additional updates for Monday. But I think, you know, getting all of these districts into kind of one package so that we can ask, you know, UTIL, all right, turn the dial on this one, turn the dial on that But I think, and I just want to kind of make sure that I'm kind of, I'm making assumptions that I just want to kind of confirm with you all. So we'll see if we can, we'll see if we can get the paper mill site tested and then connected to all the other, other districts.
That would be great.
But, but so, we want to keep, we want to keep the, that Unquity House district, we want to keep the Milton Village, Central Ave districts, we want to keep Granite Ave. If we can avoid the Elliott Street corridor, for lack of a better term, we'd like to avoid that. Is that a good assumption to make?
Yes.
Yes.
And try to reduce Fuller Village a little?
I mean, I try to, if you can, I would take Randolph Ave out, only because this whole initiative is like transit-oriented development, and that bus is so not reliable.
One thing I'd say about Fuller is it is closer to commuter rail. Closer to real transit than the Randolph Ave.
And I know that because my staff takes the bus, and it's very, very, very challenging.
I mean, it
Yeah. I think that's a good direction, Tim.
That nursing home, probably. That's the, has the most potential to be developed.
And then, Tim, because it's 11 o'clock, we should try to wrap this up soon. Do you, I just can update the board. I did have a meeting with Tim. Nick Milano got on late and with Mike Zulus, and discussing just, again, informational purposes. We did, you all saw the memo on what we heard from DHCD, which we're now calling HCL.
HLC.
It's the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Yeah, HLC. That basically, we asked them what the justification was for our being high-speed transit, and they sort of pointed the finger and said, because the MBTA says so. So Tim and Nick, as staff representatives, are going to, and I think you have some contacts, but we'll just be getting, you know, sort of, let's hear it from, you know, from MBTA, what their justification is, and if they actually do consider us high-speed transit.
Yeah, so Nick and I have been working on that. It's, you know, the T's a little bit more of a black box on this kind of stuff. So kind of figuring out, you know, both Nick and I have contacts over there, but they're not necessarily the right ones. So we're just trying to sort of get the best person to kind of offer insight on this. You know, the things that we've kind of come up with so far are, again, those sort of, in the same way that HLC says, well, the T says that it's rapid transit, you know, there's documentation, you know, in the T's service policy plan, in their fair plan, you know, that, again, sort of says, we define rapid transit as red line, green line, blue line, orange line, silver line, Matapan line counts as red line. So, you know, there's a lot of documentation that says, we consider the Matapan trolley to be rapid transit by virtue of it being an extension of the red line. But I think what y'all are looking for is, but what are like the physical properties of the line that make you say that? And that's the kind of thing that's a little bit harder to dig up. So we're working on it. Nick is keeping the select board very closely briefed. You know, I think, you know, I think they meet next in terms of the order of operations, so they may have some conversation based on what Nick and I dig up between now and then. And, you know, it'll just be, you know, a kind of a decision as to, do we want to keep on working on this on a staff level? Do we want to elevate it to, you know, one or both of these boards, you know, corresponding with the T directly? So we'll, we'll keep both you and the select board posted on this. I think, you know, not to speak for Meredith, but, you know, the thing that came out of that conversation that we all had is, you know, this has got to be something where, you know, where we're holding hands on this stuff. You know, and so that's why both Nick and I are working on it and keeping our respective boards, you know, in the loop.
Tim, can I ask a question for clarity?
Yes.
Is it, is it our position as a town, and I guess that would mean us, the planning board, which I think it already is with the planning board, but the select board and also the town administrator, that we would desire to be reclassified?
I wouldn't go as far as to say that it's the town's position yet. I think that we are still, at least, you know, from the select board's standpoint, in a kind of information gathering position right now. You know, we got information from HLC. We asked, what is your criteria for making this judgment in your guidelines? And they said, you know, it's because the T considers it to be rapid transit. We're not going to second-guess the T on their own definition of their service. And so the next sort of step is like, well, okay, why does the T think that this is rapid transit? And, you know, so I think that's a bit of information that, you know, at least, you know, from my conversations with Nick and Mike, you know, we want to know that before we start to say, okay, you know, we buy it or we don't. So I think, you know, I don't think the town as a whole has kind of come up with a position yet. And I think that's something that, you know, when we have all the information, that's going to have to be a conversation, you know, between the planning board and the select board about like, okay, what do we do with this information?
I guess I just want to continue this conversation. We, the planning board, I think we discussed in our last meeting that we wanted to know the position of the select board, because we have to be unified if we're going to approach the request for reclassification. So I'm asking the other members, didn't we have this conversation and say that we would like to pursue reclassification as a board?
I thought we did.
I thought that I asked, and there was agreement, that we were going to first ask how we came to this classification, what's the criteria? Because how do you make a request for something when you don't have that information?
Correct. That was, that was how we left in the last meeting, because we, initially, there was discussion about pursuing reclassification. And I think I said after listening to you, I said, let's wait two weeks, let's get to our next meeting, let's hear what the select board has to say, give Tim a chance to talk to the town administrator. But, so I guess we haven't made that progress yet.
They had the discussion, and they found out from DHCD, so I'm going to call it so. And then I did tune in and just, and watch the select board meeting and their discussion. And they decided that the next step, and I thought, what I heard was that Meredith in that meeting had agreed to that, that they would get this information from the MBTA and then decide on next step.
And I think that the idea behind it is that, once we know what their statement is, we know how to better draft our letter. If the select board supports writing the letter. But it will help us to guide what we write based on what we receive.
Yeah. That response from the MBTA, the email that Tim sent us, I think the person's name, first name was Nathan, I think, was his name? Isn't that
From DHCD. It was DHCD.
Yeah, so Nathan Carlucci is the state's MBTA compliance coordinator. He's out of HLC.
HLC.
The former DHCD, not MBTA.
Okay. So MBTA Communities Compliance Coordinator, okay, so he's not an MBTA representative?
So one thing I too think, before we would write that letter, I would want to confirm with DHCD, it was at Housing and Livable Communities, HLC?
HLC.
We'd want to confirm, as Tim is planning to do, that we can count this land area that the model is allowing us to count. So in other words, if that's, if they came back and said that Milton, your first thing you're asking us is to reclassify versus Milton, the first thing you're asking us is, please confirm that this, including this land area, would allow us to be compliant, that is a different first request, is I guess, what I had talked about before. Think about what our first request really wants to be, and that would come out of our further analysis. So we're getting closer, I think, to knowing what our, what our ask might be, so that we can ask, or we can show that Milton is trying to solve its problem, solve this problem in a way that's meaningful, but we still need some relief or some interpretation that works in our favor to do it. It might have the same effect as the classification change in terms of the reality of how many units.
So I sort of see, we have to ask HLC for the, to see if they are going to classify the wetlands, right? So that's an HLC.
Right.
So that's not an MBTA.
Right.
So I see it as the request to HLC is one path, and the seeking reclassification is a different, is a parallel path for the T. So they're not actually the same path, they're two separate paths.
So I guess the question would be, what else comes with the reclassification? Is there any dollar reduction? Is there any federal funding change? You know, if it gets changed, how they prioritize service? Because a reclassification impacts more than just Milton, or the MBTA, it impacts Boston. And so I don't see how they would actually make that reclassification without going through a public process. That could take some time. But I mean, that's just
I think, for clarity, the ask to MBTA is an informational one, a data gathering one, on further understanding how they understand rapid transit as, in a quantitative way, rather than in these sort of general, it's an extension to the red line and the red line is rapid transit. The MBTA would not be the body who would reclassify us. That request is still going to be directed at HLC. Because they're the ones who establish those guidelines.
It's a bank shot, because HLC, who is, who, the only ones we really care about are them, because they have the guidelines and they make the classifications for the purposes of this law. Like, they said to us, you're a rapid transit community, because the T says you're a rapid transit community. So, you know, what follows from that is, if they're deferring to the T, then the T needs to call us something different.
Agreed.
Right, right, correct, yes.
So our request for reclassification would go to the T? You know, the T, whoever that is at the T? Right?
I
I think it's still HLC. I think HLC is ultimately, because they have, they have category, they have created the categories of high-speed transit commuters.
Based on what the
That doesn't make sense. This sounds like a circular formula.
Well, I mean, here's what I'll say. The T's not going to unwind every policy that they have in order to make us not be a rapid transit community. All right? Because they have, they have planning, they have policies, their fair policy, which is a state-mandated document, their service policy, which is a state and federal document, all has us as rapid transit. So it's less about getting the T to unwind that classification, and more understanding why the T makes the classification, and then determining, do we have counterarguments to that that we can make to HLC to convince HLC, you shouldn't just be deferring to the T on this, you should be listening to us. Does that make sense?
So we have to convince HLC to change the T's classification of us, is what you're saying?
No.
We have to convince We have to convince, we have to convince HLC to not just automatically defer to the T's classification effectively.
Why and how?
That's, that's the challenge in front of the town.
Tim, when, when was this trolley line classified as rapid transit?
I don't know. I can, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the other thing that like, you know, again, we're, we're trying to find the right kind of person that can answer some of these questions at the T. But, you know, the conversations that I've had, I can't speak for Nick, but I can, I can kind of speak to, at least characterizing what he's told me, is that, you know, the way that the T, in a lot of their documents, defines things is just, you know, the red line's rapid transit, Mattapan Trolley is part of the red line. And, you know, it becomes a received wisdom sort of thing. Now, you know, I can, I can tell you that based on, you know, anyone's sort of observation of what the Mattapan Trolley is, you know, it's train tracks, it's an exclusive right-of-way, it's got frequent headways. You know, this is light rail transit in a similar way that you would classify the green line in the MBTA system or any of a number of other light rail transit systems throughout the country. So, you know, it's not like it's kind of out of the clear blue sky that they're calling the Mattapan Trolley rapid transit. It has characteristics of rapid transit that it shares with a lot of other light rail systems. But in terms of like, you know, is there a sort of a list of, you know, checkboxes that they apply to every transit line and say, you check all these boxes, you're rapid transit? That may not even exist.
Well, I think it may because when I talked to someone at the T, they basically said a rapid transit is, the train is able to go underground.
And this train does not have an exclusive right-of-way?
This does not have the ability to go underground.
Neither does any of the green line, or a good chunk of the green line.
Well, it does have an exclusive right-of-way. It crosses the street, but that doesn't mean, you know, a car can't make a right onto the red line tracks, right?
Yeah, but it has to stop at the crossing.
That, that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's not an exclusive right-of-way.
So this should be debated between us and the T, not me and you, right?
I don't think they would consider it much of a debate, though.
Well, can we?
Well, I thought it was interesting that the speaker earlier said, after the transformation and all the refurbishment of the trolley, that it would still not be high-speed transit.
It's really not.
And that was coming from somebody at the T. I was not on that.
It's really not in our individual opinions that the MBTA designation is based on our, our observations or our experiences. So I think the path makes sense. Get the information from the MBTA, go back to HLC. And, but we don't go back to HLC until we have that additional information. And I think it would be beneficial to have this one more compliance model with what we've talked about tonight before going back as well. Because maybe what you go back to them with is, this is our progress. And, you know, and these are the challenges that we face because of this situation. And part of this situation is because of this classification. You know, so you're coming at it from a different approach.
You've said in the past that, given our past history, that DHCD or whomever, HLC, really doesn't give Milton much consideration at all. What we have is two models that show that we could comply. It, it would be significant sacrifice for the town, but we could comply. And if they have any, if they have any idea at all that we could comply, why would they ever, you know, pursue, you know, some relief from the, from the MBTA for us?
Well, the compliance, I mean, we, we think, as Tim said, that it complies. But if he finds out that this land area is not, then we're not in compliance.
I understand. But we could also, even if we didn't use granted ev, we could use util's and comply.
Yeah.
And destroy.
Yeah. I mean, of course, you can comply with destroying everything in town, of course.
But, but I mean, your contention in the past has been, they don't really care. They don't really care about Milton. You know, I, I don't know. I mean, I, obviously, we need, we need every.
You've taken that to an extreme of what I meant by that comment.
But I'm afraid if you go to them and say, look, we've done some really good work and we might be able to make it work. However, are we really a rapid transit community? I'm, it's my opinion that that isn't going to really move us in the direction we want to. I think it'd be better for the town to become reclassified. That's, this is my opinion. And have to deal with 25% and have two years to figure it out. That would be much better for the town than to be forced into making a decision by the end of the year and be forced to develop zoning that adds 2,466. And we still have yet to see the financial implications of what this would be for the town. We need that as well. But, you know, we've said this the last meeting. I guess it's in Tim's hands to, you know, to work with the other board and with the town administrator to see, if we go that way and try to get the definition, how they, what they use, what is the criteria that defined us as rapid transit? I think that's what you're saying. We're going to try to get that criteria. But I'm concerned with going back and appealing, the town of Milton, appealing to HLC. I don't think they're going to really care. But if, if the planning board and the select board and the town administrator agree that we, you know, should pursue reclassification, then at that point, we should get our congressional representatives, you know, our legislative representatives, I should say, to assist us.
And I think we need to do it, as I said two weeks ago. And I was, you know, I made a motion to the effect. And then, you know, Cheryl spoke and then, you know, Sean graciously gave Tim another two weeks. I, I feel the pressure. And I think we need help. I think we do need help from Timelti and Driscoll. And I think we need to make a decision. Sometimes you just have to make a decision. And I was ready to make that choice two weeks ago and I'm ready to do it again tonight. I'm ready to ask for help from our legislators and I'm ready to ask for help to get us reclassified.
Yeah, but the town has to be unified. You know, we can't have, we can't have one board that's, that has, you know, one opinion and the select board not have yet that opinion or the town administrator not yet be willing. Everybody has to have that opinion. It, there's, there's no other way you could ask, you know, the representatives to help us. And, I mean, we've heard from our resident Mark Cristo, who happens to still be sitting here. Meredith, you were referring to Mark earlier.
Yes, Mark.
And you look at the MBTA data, 781 boardings per day over four stops. No matter what they come up with for criteria, I just, there's nothing about that line that seems rapid to me. That's in an entire day, that's their data. You know, no one else's, their data.
Sean, what's rapid is the amount of times the train comes, the capacity the train has and how long it takes you to get downtown from any of those stops. The ridership is determined by the land use. Nobody lives on Cape and Street, so no one gets on the train at Cape and Street. So the ridership, the ridership has, has very little to do with whether or not it's rapid transit.
But those other things you mentioned, Tim? You mentioned capacity, you mentioned frequency, right? Those.
Yeah.
Does it have high capacity?
Absolutely.
The trolley line has high capacity.
That, that, that line used to have 3,300 riders a day. It's got less than half that right now, you know, after the pandemic. You know, each of those cars, you could, you could fit more than 50 people on each of those cars. And, you know, they're, you know, you look at the numbers and they're not getting those. There's room for more people to ride that train, especially at the headways that it has. It comes every six minutes in the peak hour.
Yeah.
And the reason there's not ridership on, we've talked about this before. The MBTA is having trouble across the system. And right now, to take the red line, it's, it's not the trolley that's the problem. The red line service is very slow right now. So people are taking the commuter rail and probably taking their car more. But I've heard that commuter rail ridership is up quite a bit because of the trouble with the, and we actually have opportunity to take it in Milton because we have stations that are not very far from us. But Meredith outlined what she agreed to with Tim and with Nick and with Mike Zulis. And it seems that that's the approach that they would like to take, that the select board agreed to that approach, at least what I watched. And it seems to me, if we want to be working cooperatively that way, the next step is to wait for that information to come back.
So my concern is that we run out of time. You know, how long do we wait? Keep coming back and getting not the information that we need? And then at what point do we maybe write our own letter and do it ourselves as the planning board?
Because as I understand it, we are, we have our own charge and we have our own obligations. And I think it's okay if we have a difference of opinion than other boards in town. I know this is a really big thing. And of course, it looks great to have all boards. But sometimes all boards are not in agreement. And we have to fulfill our charge.
Well, my opinion is, Chair is our representative. She has, she has made an agreement and we should follow the agreement that she's made. We have another meeting in three weeks and that should be adequate time. The next meeting we have is the 3rd of August. That has to be adequate time. You know, this is a serious matter and it needs to be pursued with a sense of urgency. So whoever has to pursue with a sense of urgency, whether that's Nick Milano, or Tim, or somebody else, the Chair of the Select Board, pursue it with a sense of urgency and we should be able to make a decision at the next meeting on the 3rd. But I just don't feel like it's right at this point. And I understand what you're saying, Maggie, I agree. But if Meredith's made an agreement, we should allow Meredith to fulfill that agreement and not have different boards within the town doing, taking different actions. That's just not good.
True, true.
And I think part of the strategy also is to, if we put all of our arguments out front, they're just going to rebut those arguments. But if we, if we give room to the MBTA to explain, we can write a better letter, you know, or the select board can write a better letter with, in consultation with us, that will be stronger and a more powerful letter.
That would be, that would be good. That would be nice if that happens.
And given the hour of 11:26 and one more agenda item.
All right.
I think, yes. We're ready to move on on that and thank you all for this.
I just have one question, I apologize. But Tim, you sent us an email in regard to what Nick had sent to you, basically saying that the planning board could do a mailing, right?
Yes.
And there's a quote from Jan O'Grafx. I just didn't understand the dollar value. That quote said $2,351. What, but the, the email, I think you had a larger value in your email. I might have missed something.
That includes, that, so the, the, the quote is for the printing and then the dollar figure in the email is with postage added.
Okay, okay.
And is that going into a water bill or a tax bill?
That would be an independently sent mailing from the planning board.
It's a six-inch by nine-inch card. Remember, remember when you ran for election and you had, you didn't, you didn't do that, did you?
I didn't have to, no.
Okay. Yeah.
So didn't we talk about trying to get it into a water bill?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I talked to the town administrator about that. There's not really, there's not really a mechanism for that. So sending out a mailing is super straightforward in a way that trying to insert something into the water bill or the tax bill is a process that involves multiple departments. And it just, there's no, there's not as much precedent for it. So this is just a straightforward thing. You can do a mailing, we can, we've got money and.
Do we need to vote on that, Tim, to authorize you?
So wait, so my, my, wait, wait, hold on. My question is, why would this be coming out of the planning board budget when it seems like it should be coming out of maybe the selectman's budget?
You can, you can ask them to pay for it. I think, I mean, you know, it's, this is an idea that came out of the planning board. And so, I mean, it's, whoever pays for it, pays for it. You know, we, we got the quote. I think if it's a planning board priority, you know, the plan board's got money to do it. If you want someone else to pay for it, you've got to convince them to pay for it, I guess.
To be honest with you, I'd rather pay for it and, and be responsible for executing it, you know? So I understand your point, but it was our idea, not their idea. And, you know, we should, we should be responsible for getting it done.
I just want to look into it a little deeper to see if we can actually put it in a water bill or a tax bill.
Yeah, because my recollection is, I believe they do it with, like, the schools. You know, if they look for a donation for.
It's been done before.
The schools, you can send extra money in.
Yeah. Just consider the impact, though. The card, I mean, this is obviously eight by 11, but six by nine is a little smaller than, than this. It's, it's a glossy card and, you know, people, people, you will get people's attention. I'm not saying they don't pay attention to the water bills, though.
Well, just the last time we spoke, it was.
I, I had suggested.
I think you guys said it was better in a bill because everyone opens it and everyone reads it. Maybe we could do both.
Yeah.
To Maggie's point.
Yeah, but if we get, you know, my only worry is we get caught up in the complexity of, you know, some department having to accomplish it and it doesn't happen, you know?
True, true.
You know, this is such an important matter. I'm a bit of a conservative financially. I don't like spending the money either, but it might be the best way to get the message out there. If you have, you can write on both sides of the card and we might be able to get people's attention.
Okay.
There was a lot of discomfort when I spoke with our Treasury Department about including it in a tax bill. So it's not to say it's not legally or physically impossible, but you don't get pushback if you guys are the ones leading this charge like you are getting when I've talked with the other departments.
Interesting.
That's interesting, yeah.
All right, so is this a, we want to go ahead with this?
Yes.
I'd be in favor of going ahead with it. I don't know if it's a vote we have to take or whatnot, but I mean, we still have a message we have to write. We have to figure out how to write what's going to be written, which is, I think is much more difficult than agreeing to send out a card.
Right, right.
All right, so let's move forward with a draft. Tim, if you wouldn't mind, and Josh, maybe putting something together that you could circulate?
Yeah, we, because we talked about this two-ish months ago. We did initial 200 postcards that we've been giving out at our public meetings. We gave out at the farmers market where we're today. Graphic design is not our skill set, so it's kind of ugly. It's the same orange that's on the trains, but it's, it's very basic information. Cheryl, you saw this earlier at the market. But that, that could be a, an initial template for what kind of information would be included. It has the link to our dedicated webpage. There's certainly room to include the QR code to the survey.
Yeah, super, super basic and really just like, you know, load up everything on the website and just point people to it. There, you know, we may want to take the opportunity to put a little bit more information on it just, you know, because, you know, it's good to point people in the direction of all of the resources. But I think, you know, to, you know, Sean mentioned this at some meeting at some point, like, you know, you want to put the basics in people's hands. Now that, you know, becomes a little bit more of an issue because there could be some disagreement about what the basic information is. But, but I, let's, so we've got something that we've been handing out. We can build on that. We can put it on two sides. So we will come up with some, some language and show you something. I'll want to just talk to Nick and make sure. I mean, we printed those out at Staples. We just want to see exactly kind of what type of product our printer kind of is capable of.
Yeah. I have an issue with one word. And I have an issue with, we are required. We are required. I do not agree with that. We, there is a, again, I have said this for months. There's a penalty if you don't comply. You know, Tim and I have probably debated this and we're on different sides. He says it's compulsory. If it was compulsory, we wouldn't have town meeting voting on it, right? So you have an option. You have an option to either accept and, and, and put the zoning in place or not. You have an option to either accept and, and, and put the zoning in place or not. You can't, as soon as you say we're required, what, where, wherein that word does somebody feel like they have a right to have a different opinion?
I, we've, we've discussed this over many meetings, but the option is for how we design these districts. That is what goes before town meeting, is, is how, what compliance looks like. Other states say around transit, it has to be 50 units per acre. That's, that's what they did in California. That was shall, as, just as this law is, we shall do that. What we have the option for at town meeting is what compliance looks like. That is a, a gift to us.
Sean, we'll, we'll, we'll draw up some language. We'll bring it to the board. You guys can toss it around.
And just focus on the law, not the guidelines.
Well, I will say that the Attorney General and the Governor have both said that they view it as mandatory and that it's the law. And so the, I don't feel as like I am one to challenge the Attorney General, but it, in terms of the language, you know, that, that's what's come out from them. What the penalty's going to be is another story, but I don't think we have a, another opinion that says it's not the law.
The penalty is defined. They have defined it. They could change it, but they've defined it. And right now, if we said we weren't going to do it, and, and Tim and Josh know this, it's a million dollars of funding over 10 years, right? It's $100,000 a year.
They said that that's not, in the workshops that I've attended, they said that, that they would not, telling the people attending, I would not assume that that will be the only consequence of non-compliance.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's state officials saying that.
Even if we don't comply.
So let them change it. But, but my point is, you know, they're giving you a penalty because they recognize that some towns might not accept and go along with the zoning. So the penalty, so it's not required.
We also know that there are some towns that are being sued, are going to be sued soon by civil rights groups. They're getting teed up because it is the law, and they're going to challenge it. And we know that developers are going to queue up and figure out how they can apply for projects under it, just like they've figured out how to make the best out of what was a good intention law, the Chapter 40B law. That started out as reasonable projects at reasonable scale that fit into communities, and it's come, become something totally different. So the, all of this stuff is working, so I, I think it's naive, honestly, to think it's only going to be a million dollars a year is going to be our consequence. I, I just think.
$100,000 a year. That's the math. I mean, that's the math.
I think it's naive to think that that's the only consequence.
Even if we don't comply for a year, advise us a year to take our time.
And again, I'm focused on the law. And again, to your point, on March 15, 2023, I understand the Attorney General stated, all MBTA communities must comply with the law. So focus on the law, not the guidelines. I am all in favor of following the law. I'm not in favor of following the guidelines. So that's what we have to look at, is just the law, guidelines.
And the law requires multi-family zoning.
Yeah, correct.
So they say we're required.
In a reasonable amount, reasonable. So we need to follow the law. Guidelines are not legally enforceable.
I'm not an attorney, can't make that interpretation.
They're not legally enforceable.
But Milton signaling itself out to join about six communities who are trying to defy the law that way, I think we'll end up being in more significant trouble than we, than losing $100,000 a year, if that's what you say it is. But maybe that language is tweaked to say we're required to comply with multi-family zoning at a reasonable size within a half mile of district, whatever that was in the exact law, and the guidelines say XYZ. So we still have to come up with zoning and the timeframe that's required in the guidelines.
Yeah, I, I.
All right, it's 11, it's 11:38. I know we're not going to solve this tonight, but I, I thank you all for everyone's comments. But I think we should move on, and we will get more information on this. And, and, you know, for further discussion, we will, we will keep discussing this. So, so we do have one more item. Tim, is this something we can defer, or do we need to discuss this tonight? The MBTA? I'm sorry, the.
I think just.
Fire station.
Just to really, really, really quickly, you know, the plant, the planning board and MPIC, in reviewing the site plan for that fire headquarters, had recommended a, a pathway between the Council on Aging and Town Hall, kind of adjacent to that park where the basketball court is, for various driveway alignment and stormwater infrastructure reasons. That alignment of that pathway was imperiled. We had a meeting with the Fire Station Building Committee, myself, Cheryl, the town administrator was involved. Just to kind of like reiterate, you know, this was a priority for the planning board when we looked at these plans. We want to make sure we figure out a way to include this thing. We had a site walk, Marina Fernandez, the town engineer, and myself, Chief Madden, and, and the construction manager for the project. I think there's a, pun intended, I think there's a pathway for this pathway, you know, to, to kind of, you know, not bust the budget for the project, to, to get people from Council on Aging, you know, to Town Hall through that park, in a way that, that doesn't sacrifice any of the operational things for the, for the firehouse. So this was something that has been kind of a fast emerging issue. If, if it wasn't going to resolve itself, I thought the planning board might want to offer some comments. But I think we're working on something and should have a solution. So I'll just keep you all posted for the next meeting, depending on what comes up. But just wanted to kind of put that on your radar.
Yeah, my opinion, Tim, I, I think it makes all the sense in the world. Changing that curb line is necessary to create the proper access for the, for the vehicles to get into the, into the firehouse.
Yeah, that's never, I mean, the operations of the firehouse is like number one, two, and three. So, you know, but the, the thing is, you know, what we've always tried to impress upon everybody is that, you know, this is, this is a campus of municipal uses and, you know, it's, if there's a capability of doing this work when there's construction going on, as opposed to kind of punting it to the future, we want to figure out a way to do it. So it was on the site plan. We want to keep it on the site plan, and we're figuring out a way to do that, that again, you know, doesn't sacrifice the operations of the firehouse, doesn't sacrifice the budget. I think there's a very feasible path forward based on some input that the town engineer provided. So we, we should have an update for you, hopefully before the next meeting.
Yeah. It, it looks like that sidewalk and that plan that you sent is in a better location in terms of bringing people onto the Town Hall site, you know, once they get to the front of the fire station. I think if they're, they're probably arriving in a better location than they were on the original sidewalk, but.
There's, there's issues with that because of, you know, it's, it's about connecting the municipal uses. So we, we really did want to have an alignment with the front door of the Council on Aging. There's no sidewalk on that side of Walnut Street, so it kind of like, it starts in a good place and ends in a good place, but you can't get there from here.
Yeah.
But we'll, I, I, I think we'll be able to accommodate both, which, which is, which would be great. So we, we're, we're, we're working on it.
So Tim, my only question is, have you reached out to the Commission on Disabilities? Because they probably have a good connection with the folks at the Council on Aging. So having the Commission with Disabilities review it, that would be helpful.
I, I haven't yet. If it comes to that, I will. Like I said, I, I think that there's, there's a path forward here, and I think, you know, our, our, our goals have always been informed by, you know, helping people be mobile and, and be able to sort of get from, from one place to another. So if, if we need to enlist some more help, we'll do it. I don't think we'll need to, though.
Might be nice if you just include them in the discussion.
Doesn't want to.
All right. All right, thank you, Tim. Keep us updated on that. I think once we have a final, once there's a final draft, that could be something that could be shared and potentially looked at with different groups. So, and including that Commission on Disabilities. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, everyone who participated.
Good night, guys. All right, take care.
Thank you.